Okay, thank you all for coming this evening. We'll begin with our school board study session. I'd like to welcome you all here and I'll turn it over to Dr. Stallow for purpose and agenda.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of study sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at the board table. This evening, as you look at the agenda in front of you, we're going to start off with a review of a board resolution draft on equity and inclusion led by our community engagement committee and some of the stakeholders who were also a part of that process. And then, as we look at the operational oversight items, we'll get a construction update. We'll also continue working on our revised budget for the current year. Jep Holberg and Marcus Malazo will provide additional information that the board members requested regarding a capital projects levy or a tech levy. And then, I'll provide just a brief update on our COVID-19 pandemic planning and the current status of the Ready to Learn Plan. And then, board members will be spending some time looking at some policies as well this evening.
Okay. Our board agenda for 2021 working document is what we follow for our goals for the year. Tonight, we're going to be working more specifically. Our focus will be on the budget and the tech levy, as well as the reference Dr. Stallow made to the in-community engagement and equity and observing our role in operational oversight. So, the next item on our agenda is the board equity, but I think part of the group isn't quite here yet. Is that correct?
Yeah. Just running a little bit late.
She's leaving another meeting and coming. I can text her. I do have a little interaction.
Do you have a start? You want to start now and then we'll continue on when she gets here? Or would you like me to skip to the next item?
What is the next? Let me look.
Construction.
Construction update. We could do that first.
Let's do that first.
Okay, we'll move to oversight of operations on the construction update.
Jim stepped out to give us space.
I doubt Jim has stepped back yet.
Thank you.
He's coming.
I hear a door opening too, so she might be here.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Jim, how would you like to speak now?
Sorry, we bumped your head just because.
School Board Dr. Stallow.
Jim, I think you'll have to come up to the podium just so the mic, so that your voice is picked up for the listening public out there.
They have told us to quiet down. Good evening, Chair Schimmick, School Board Dr. Stallow. Brief update on construction. We are moving along, finishing up Trazo in the high school area G. We are still slated to get that area turned over to the district December 18th, and all things are looking good there. So, the last piece of the puzzle and it's coming along nicely. There will be some punchless items that will carry on for some time, but we're making real progress, so thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Jim? Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
We continue on with the budget? That's a little bit...
How long the budget will take.
That's a little bit longer, I believe, isn't it, Julie? Depends on how many questions we have.
Yeah. So, we do have some introductory work.
Okay, why don't you go ahead then? We'll go back to board equity and inclusion resolution.
Thank you. For those listening, we are just waiting. We have a few stakeholders this evening joining us for this agenda item, which is the first presentation of our board resolution committing to equity and inclusion work. Just briefly to let you know how we'll go through this, first of all, we're going to give you just some background on how we arrived at bringing forward this document that we are reviewing this evening. We think it's really important you understand the process that went into it. Stacy and Enrique will follow those comments briefly. And then, we have a few stakeholders this evening who have been part of this process, who will share why they got involved and how their voices are represented. And then, we will present the resolution in full to the board and for the people listening. And then, with the chair's permission, we would open the floor to discussion on that resolution. So, it is my job and privilege to share with you how we arrived at the document that we are reviewing right now. Some of you may have attended the MSBA webinar on equity and inclusion last week, and they ended the webinar with the proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together." What we're bringing forward tonight is the work of many who have traveled far together. It is not the work of Stacy, Enrique, Dr. Stallow, and myself, rather it is the work of several people who represent various stakeholder groups in our district and our community. It is the work of teachers, students, staff, parents, administrators, and community members. Just to give you some sense of what led to taking on this project, we all know as board members that both our strategic directions and our priority work include commitments to doing equity and inclusion work. This is not something new for our district. And the Community Engagement and Legislative Committee has been working on finding ways to increase meaningful engagement with different groups in our community. Prior to the COVID-19 shutdown last March, one of our efforts in the community was to increase engagement with stakeholders who might help us take a closer look at the district equity and inclusion work, especially our role as a school board. The shutdown in March did slow our progress for a time, as the district dealt with the need for planning for a switch to distance learning. However, as the pandemic timeline extended, one of the results was the highlighting of disparities in the world, both for schools and communities. And then, the murder of George Floyd happened on May 25th, right in our own backyard. After that, school districts started issuing resolutions, speaking out against racism and supporting equity and inclusion efforts. And while our district, under Dr. Stallow's leadership, did reach out to our community, as a board, we at that time did not issue any public statement. So, as the committee charged with community engagement, the four of us realized that we could not put off our commitment to engaging these stakeholders to address these issues. We reached out to nine stakeholders and invited them to join us on June 10th. We reached out to people who had a connection with the district that we could easily assemble, and we called it a listening session. We opened the floor and asked these stakeholders to share with us their personal stories about how the events unfolding were impacting them as individuals, and they decided to share with us ideas for what the district might do to better address equity, inclusion, and racism. One of the clearest message came from the group that night was an ask that the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board make a public statement about where it stands on the issues and the direction of the board. The administration and the teachers have been doing this work in the schools, but the board has not made a public statement. You may recall at the board retreat this summer, we shared our committee work to date, and we were directed to move forward by the board. We began collecting and reading the work being done by other districts in the area. Rather than just edit a resolution from another district, we decided to pull together ideas that seemed specific for us in Prior Lake Savage. And at that time, we decided to reach out to a larger stakeholder group for input in assembling the resolution. We ended up with a group of approximately 25 stakeholders. As a reminder, these were students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and community members. We held virtual meetings where we gathered input. We started at a much more general overview of what the resolution should include and how it could be sure to reflect the voices of everybody who participated. We also received feedbacks from participants who could not join us in the editing sessions but sent us via email their thoughts, and those were incorporated as well. As time went on, after several meetings back and forth, we asked a volunteer from each representative stakeholder group to join a smaller editing group in which we would go line by line through the resolution. So, for example, we had a teacher represented and we had a student represented and a community member and a staff member. When we had that editing session, we found that we spent an awful lot of time, sometimes taking one line out and discussing it at length, and sometimes even taking a single word out and discussing that at length. What was critical was that the intent of the group come forward in the words that were chosen. After we had all agreed on final details, Sarah Wheelock spent a great deal of time checking for our proper phrasing, our punctuation, and our grammar, and she also brought with it her editing and legal background. With the finished document in hand, we invited all of the original stakeholders back to come full circle and review the finished document to ensure that we had clearly captured what the original intent was with the large group. A few important notes to share with all of you. We did consult with Paula Olaklin at MSBA a few times to gain clarity on the role of a board resolution and how to involve stakeholders. She was incredibly helpful and helped us stay in line with what the State School Board Association would recommend. We worked hard to clarify the difference between a resolution and action plans or policies. We worked on this with the stakeholder group, and for the sake of those listening tonight, we clarified that the role of a school board is to govern, and the role of a superintendent and her staff is to manage and implement. So, our job was not to figure out all the how-tos with this resolution. And we also clarified that a resolution is a formal document that makes a statement about an issue so important that the board wants a record of it. It also stands as a public record in case compliance with the resolution becomes an issue down the road. And if a school board drafts a resolution, it should be supplemented with the action steps and concrete guidelines in later steps. This could be through board policies or through implementation plans established by the administration, the staff, and the teachers. Throughout the process, stakeholder input will remain important. A resolution, then, is a firm governing-type statement, but is not something that lists out specific action plans. So, as a reminder, tonight, we are building upon our commitments in our strategic plan and priority work. We have been updating the entire board as we go and getting direction to move forward. We have received guidance from MSBA, and I would like to, just before we conclude here, thank the committee, Enrique, Stacy, and Dr. Stallow. They committed to moving this work forward, not only in spite of what is happening in the world, but because of what is happening in the world. And we have worked with an incredible team of stakeholders, people who took time from their work, school, family, and more, to help us put together the document we are reviewing this evening. I'm hopeful many of them are listening right now, and to all of them, we are grateful. They were brave, vulnerable, and gave so much. And tonight, we want to honor the intent in the words as we discuss them. This work was challenging, time-consuming, and intense, and it was also an opportunity to learn how to lean into conversations that can sometimes be uncomfortable. But I think I can speak for the committee when I say, learning to stay with the work, even if at times uncomfortable, is the key to moving forward. With that, I'll ask Enrique and Stacy if they would like to add things that I left out.
Okay. Thanks, Enrique. Michael, once again, I'm going to just give a shout out to Michael, and then, everyone here obviously knows on the committee that she has poured her heart and soul into this, has really been the main communicator. It's been a lot of meetings, and she's really kind of helped organize us and keep us all moving along, so I just want to give a shout out to her. In 10 years on the board, I have never experienced such authentic public engagement, and I really feel like this is a pathway forward for us as a board as to how to engage with the public. I'm just really proud of our group. I think, as Michael said, we had conversations, and I'm going to be straight up honest, the first meeting in June, when we called and just asked for people that had contact with us over the last, you know, few years, if they would come together and we could just listen, I was extremely nervous and afraid of saying something or doing something wrong. And I've learned so much from all these people, but I just want to say, thank you for educating me and making this a passion to continue forward, because, you know, this is really important for the district and the board to have this resolution. I think it sets the direction that a lot in our administration have been doing on their own without, you know, real strength from the board. So, I look at this as kind of a reset for the board moving forward. I think as we had our meetings with people, they shared with us their stories and their pain, to be very honest, and it was hard to hear about things that, you know, happened within our district. And I think that there was such an authentic feeling together, that we were in this together, and that they were so willing to be vulnerable with us, that I'm going to be really protective of this document, and I'm going to refer to it frequently to make sure that I continue to look at things, and their voices are in my head when I do that. So, I just want to say thank you to the group. It's really been a privilege.
Enrique, did you have anything to add?
Thank you very much. Thank you for that, Stacy. I can definitely hear the emotion coming through as you speak. These were very impactful, very important conversations that we had. I think Michael said that they were brave and vulnerable. Absolutely, very brave, very vulnerable, very safe spaces to share what the Prior Lake experience has been for many people from the community. And while it was unnerving and it sometimes just, we had no idea what was going to happen or what was going to come next or what people were going to say, it was that permission to be vulnerable, that permission to put all of that on display that they welcomed, and they really appreciated that us as a school board wanted their voices, wanted their stories, wanted their experiences, so that we could help carry that weight and burden alongside them and commit right there with them that we are going to drive change and that we are going to be very intentional about what this looks like for us as a board, us as an administration, and as a district, as we look to right some wrongs that have existed in the past, and look to increase our own awareness, increase education, and reflect back to our community what it is that we expect of ourselves, what do we expect of them. So, it was tremendous effort, but it's not done. There's still so much more to be done, and this is just a mile marker as we continue to fight forward. So, I appreciate the contributions of every single person, everyone that supported the family members so that they can be a part of this experience with us, and all of the hours, all of the time that has gone into crafting the resolution as it stands right now. So, thank you so much.
At this time, we'd like to have, we have in the room with us four of the stakeholders who are instrumental to the process, who will just briefly introduce themselves and why they chose to participate in this process. And after they do that, we also have a teacher who was not able to attend this evening, who has sent a statement that Enrique will read after the introductions, and then, we will have stakeholders read the resolution to the group. If I could invite the four of you to come up, just try and keep your distance when you go to the podium and share a few words with the committee. Sarah, do you want to start?
Can you hear me okay, or should I take my mask off?
We can hear you.
You can hear me okay?
Maybe step just a little bit closer, but...
Okay, not a problem. "To heal was to be familiar with what destroyed," Ray Young Bear, Muskwaki poet. "Hope, bona bicua, nadesius, amukamania swan, Sarah Wheelock. Muckwassuak, neduch, muskwaki hanag, duchik." I just said, hello, greetings relatives. My Muskwaki name is bona bicua, which means lady bear who makes a den. My English name is Sarah Wheelock. I am Bear Clan, and I am from the people of the red earth, the Muskwakiaki, a federally recognized sovereign Indian tribe. I stand before you today. I'm a Squawki woman. I represent my children, Aqua Wasek, whose English name is Ava, a ninth grader at Prior Lake High School, and Mukaday Muk, whose English name is Jap, a seventh grader at Twin Oaks Middle School. I represent my family, who are indigenous to the lands on which the United States and Canada now sit. I represent the students and families from numerous tribes that are part of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' family, including the Dal Kota, whose original homelands we are now sitting or standing on. And our students and families from the Anishinaabe people, known to many of you as Ojibwe or Chipewa, and the Lakota, Hochunk, Navajo, Mandan, Hidatsa, Aricara, Blackfeet, Brothertown, Menominee, Oneida, Potawatomi, and so many more. The original people of this land have experienced a history of more than 500 years of war, genocide, and destruction at the hands of the colonizers, the settlers, and their governments. And yet, we are still here. We survive and we thrive. Ours is a story of strength and resilience and beauty. This resolution represents an understanding by this school board in this district that our history and our present-day existence as indigenous people and people of every color, including white people, are complicated and fraught with the twin scourges of racism and bias. It is also significant that many people are members of more than one group that experiences discrimination, which is known as intersectionality. The insidious forces of racism, implicit bias, and ignorance work against the ability of all children to succeed in school, and the first step to helping our children is to have awareness of these obstacles and acknowledge them. Many steps must follow. But this resolution, which we have been honored to have had a voice in creating, is a critical first step. This resolution acknowledges the reality of marginalized groups within this school district and the need to take real, concrete steps to address these issues. I come here before you not to castigate, lay blame, or engender negative feelings. I come in the spirit of my people and in the spirit of the Laker way, a guiding philosophy for this school district comprised of three core beliefs: pride, respect, and responsibility. This resolution aligns with these self-proclaimed Laker values and gives them meaning for indigenous students in a manner not yet realized in this district. One of the core beliefs of most indigenous people is that we are all related. In Muskwaki, we say, "Jaganagumenegei." What happens to one happens to us all. We must take care of each other's. We stand with our sisters and our brothers from every race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, and gender identity, and telling the board that we want this resolution to pass. We urge every board member to vote yes, and we look forward to a partnership with the board and the district that will grow out of this resolution. I look at this resolution and I see potential. Potential for better schools, for better outcomes for all of our children, and for a better world. In these challenging times, I urge you to be a beacon for a path forward that lifts us all up. As I end my comments tonight, I want to reread the poetry that I began with, written by a fellow Muskwaki tribal member and nationally renowned poet, Ray Young Bear. "To heal was to be familiar with what destroyed." Allow those words to sink in and consider them when you vote. Getabi, Pira Maya Ye, Megwetch. Thank you for your time tonight, and jaganagumenegei.
It is absolutely terrible to be second after that. But, thank you, Sarah. I do not have as eloquent and put-together as an introduction as Sarah does, so I'm just going to speak to who I am. My name is Nekah Siderstrom, and I am a transplant to Prior Lake, only been here four years. I have a wonderful husband, Charlie, and two small children, Grayson, who is four, well, no, five, just turned five, and heading to kindergarten at Loyola next year, and my daughter, Adia, who is 22 months, going on 15, and will follow in the same footsteps as her older brother. When I was asked to join the conversation in June, it was difficult, but I know necessary as an African-American, and I call myself a true-definition African-American because I am half-Nigerian. My father was an immigrant to this country, who actually arrived, right, he arrived in Washington, D.C. the morning of the March on Washington, when Martin Luther King was speaking in the "Did I Have a Dream" speech, and that was the first thing he saw as a Nigerian coming to America, because he went down to the mall with his two chaperones, who were there to show him America, and watched Martin Luther King have that speech and had this impactful moment of understanding that there was a difference between who he was as a Nigerian in America and who people who looked like him were as black Americans. And that was a very hard thing for him to have to adjust to as an immigrant to this country at that time. And my mother, who is black American and a descendant of slavery, and she grew up in South Side Chicago, and the only reason why she went to college was because they integrated University of Illinois the year that she graduated from her high school, and she was one of the few that her guidance counselor thought had a chance of proving them wrong when they assumed that black people were not able to succeed in college. And so, she got pushed into the University of Illinois and succeeded in going into education, big education background in our household. So, I am true-definition African-American. I don't call myself black American because of that, because I am very proud of my Nigerian heritage and being half-immigrant. And my children are also considered African-American, because I also want them to stay true to their heritage of also having a Nigerian grandfather, but they are half-white American as well, and their white heritage is Polish and Swedish, hence the Siderstrom, very true Minnesotans. But, to address issues of racism and issues of the expression of racism and how we live in our society, and to be a person who is a descendant of slaves in a place where it is very obvious that you're not of the community is difficult, and it was difficult to do it during a time when the community was still reeling from the murder of George Floyd. And that was a very powerful moment, because it was the first time I had to explain to my son what it meant to be black in America, and that was a very difficult thing to say to him as a four-year-old, but it was necessary, and it's been necessary for many families to have to say the same things to their children. And so, that conversation made me feel like this community that we, as a family, chose to move into for various reasons, and why we picked Prior Lake when we moved to Minnesota, needs help, and I can't ask for people to do the job that I won't do myself. So, I decided to put aside my discomforts, my worry, my concerns of how this was going to be viewed, what people are going to say, how the political climate was, and all the things that I knew were going to come up, and I put on my armor and I said, "Let's just do it." And I'm very thankful that I did, because joining that showed me that there were many, many people who thought this was just as important to their lives as it is to mine. And it's because of that unity and that deliberate intentionality that I chose to continue on with this process. And this resolution is a beautiful, hardcore, full of evidence of that work and that love and that passion and that willingness to be vulnerable and that willingness to want to do the things that are very difficult to say and difficult to engage in, and I'm very proud of the people who joined forces to make it happen. It makes me feel like staying here is the right choice. It makes me feel like putting my children in this district is the right choice, and I will do whatever I can to continue that work. Thank you.
Hi, well, thank you, Nekah. Hi, my name is Jayla Henderson. I'm a senior at Prior Lake High School. I am also in men-caps. I do the bizmics program, specifically the design and marketing program. I'm also on the Black Student Union Board, and I would just like to say, thank you for having me here, really. This is a really great honor to be here and to represent not only just the students, but the black students and the people of color that have experienced microgressions and racism. that have experienced microaggressions and racism throughout here. My parents originally moved us to Prior Lake for a better life because in South Carolina, it's really bad when it comes down to schools and how you get treated, especially when you are a certain race, and especially when, if you're more on the poorer side or the richer side. But moving here to have more of an opportunity for education and to have more of a comfort zone, really. But growing up, it was really hard for my two siblings and I because we were different than other people. I mean, our parents weren't, didn't really understand about the sports and the community that everybody got to build with their friends and family. So it was kind of hard to really get friends, and the only way we could really do anything was through sports or activities. I know my brother is a really great athlete, and my sister is kind of the brains, and I'm kind of in the middle of everything. But like, just growing up in Prior Lake, I have seen that it's a great community. I mean, it's a great place to raise family. It's a great place for friends and just having that community bond and unity. But there are still microaggressions. There's still racism going on. There is still sexism going on here and that I've seen and that I've experienced, not only with school, but online and on social media, Instagram, Snapchat, and sports, really, because they automatically think since you're black, you're good at running. That obviously wasn't the case for me, but, um... Yeah, it's just a really great honor to have just this area where I can express how I felt and seeing that Prior Lake is growing and seeing that Prior Lake is understanding and educating themselves on diversity and educating themselves on what it means to be unified with other people of color. So, it's really amazing that I get to see this before I graduated, because I never thought I'd be able to see this. Ninth grade through 11th grade, I never thought I would be able to see the day where my white peers would understand, or at least have an understanding of what I went through and who I am as a person. And that my last year at Prior Lake High School, I get to express myself as a black woman and express how I feel without it being uncomfortable or weird, so I get shut down. Or my teachers understanding who I am and embracing, rather than, "Oh, I know you're black, but we won't see you as a black person. We'll see you as a person. I want you to see who I am. I am a black American, and I want you to see that." So I'm really happy I do get to express that with this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Paulson. I'm an assistant principal at Prior Lake High School. I'm feeling a lot of pressure not to screw this up. This has been amazing. I'm here for a very simple reason. It's because of students like Jayla and all the students that she represents that have both, either through teachers, through counselors, through other students, have come to, you know, have expressed frustrations, have expressed concerns, have expressed disappointments. And underneath all of those expressions was a message that somewhere along the way, I don't know if it was from her family, from her friends, from whom, but she learned that I matter. And, um, you know, that's really important. That, you know, that's key to fundamental development. And when you hear the first "whereas," that gets read in the policy. I'm not sure how you could work in education and not be for this amendment. I'm here, I've told the students that I've worked with, I will never know. I will never know what it feels like to be discriminated against. I can't. The only thing I can do is tell you, "I hear you and I believe you." That's my power. And I wanted to be part of this process so that Jayla and students like her hear that I hear you and I believe you. And that hopefully, we can change the messaging from students having to come to us saying, "I matter" to there being an overwhelming, resounding chorus of "you matter." And that that will never be questioned, and they won't have to, they won't have to stand up and make that statement for themselves. They'll, they will grow up with it from every angle. And that's my role, is to support the work that is being done here. So, thank you.
Thank you to everybody. At this time, we'd ask our three readers to come forward and share the resolution, both for the board and those listening, and those online who may be listening and not have access to it.
Okay, we're gonna do this a little round robin style, so you'll see me at least one more time. So I will start now. This is the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' commitment to equity inclusion. Whereas, the learning and safety of the students of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is our top priority. And it is our responsibility to create a safe, secure, and inclusive environment for all learners, which requires that we promote equity and inclusion for all people, notwithstanding race, ethnicity, gender, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, or membership in any other protected class. And whereas, providing a safe and inclusive school environment that ensures the physical and emotional safety of students and staff creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement. And whereas, Minnesota, including Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, consistently has one of the largest opportunity gaps in the country. And whereas, as the Minnesota Department of Education states, "Educational equity is the condition of justice, fairness, and inclusion in our systems of education so that all students have access to the opportunities to learn and develop to their fullest potentials," end quote, and...
Whereas, the concept of educational equity goes beyond formal equality, where all learners are treated the same, to providing a barrier-free environment where all students have the resources and opportunities to succeed, notwithstanding their race, ethnicity, gender, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, or membership in any other protected class. And whereas, the district's strategic plan commits us to increase in measurable student learning and reduce opportunity gaps as we provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. And whereas, District Policy 413 dictates that the district, "Maintain a learning and working environment that is free from harassment and violence on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial status, status with regards to public assistance, sexual orientation, or disability," end quote. And whereas, racism and implicit bias manifest in myriad ways, including but not limited to hate speech, open hostility and bigotry, systemic and institutionalized practices and policies, microaggressions, color-blind ideology, willful ignorance, and unconscious bias in decision-making, each of which have the effect of negatively impacting black, indigenous, and people of color and members of other marginalized groups, and...
Whereas, discrimination, hate, bias, and racist instances against black, indigenous, and people of color and members of other marginalized groups harm them mentally, physically, emotionally, and academically. And whereas, the district's strategic plan commits us to engage students, parents, families, staff, and community members to strengthen a culture to respect and inclusion. And whereas, students, parents, families, staff, and community members have raised concerns about racism, equality, inclusion, and social justice and expect board and district leadership to address these issues with intention. And whereas, as leaders in Prior Lake Savage School areas, we are compelled to embrace an anti-racist stance and speak out in response to all forms of racism, discrimination, and bias that impact our students, parents, families, staffs, and community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is fully committed to developing and sustaining an inclusive and anti-racist school community where all students, parents, families, staff, and community members are safe, welcomed, and valued, notwithstanding their race, ethnicity, gender, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, or membership in any other protected class, commits to its own work as a board and individuals and to the training necessary to strengthen our collective ability and competence to oversee the district in becoming equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist in policies, beliefs, and actions.
affirms its commitment to support the superintendent in continuing to lead district priorities to advance equity and inclusion efforts, including but not limited to professional development opportunities, increasing equitable access to a diverse workforce, and establishing a safe and secure environment that is free of implicit bias and is anti-racist for all people, notwithstanding race, ethnicity, gender, religion, national orientation, sexual orientation, gender identity, linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, or membership in any other protected class. Encourages and supports our educators and staff as they seek to adopt instructional practices, incorporate restorative justice practices, expand their own understanding of anti-racism and implicit bias, and develop their skill sets and mindsets to respond more effectively to the needs and aspirations of all the learners they serve and demonstrate their belief in the value of each student.
commits, as a board and as individuals, to viewing and analyzing all of our work on behalf of the district through both a racial and cultural equality lens and a social justice lens and reforming current policies should they not be aligned with the vision presented in this resolution. We will create more opportunities to evaluate, I mean, evaluate, and listen to the voices of students, parents, families, staff, and community members who are black, indigenous, and people of color, and partner with them to identify and eliminate barriers that can interfere with opportunities to excel. And will commit to being accountable and achieving the vision established in this resolution.
Thank you. We thought it important that the stakeholders read it as something they're bringing to the board and asking us to approve. Before we open for discussion, I apologize, I forgot to ask Enrique to read the statement from the teacher who was unable to be here. Would that be okay?
Sure. Go ahead, Enrique.
All right. So, the Board of the Prior Lake Savage Educators Association Coalition for Teachers of Color endorses the 2020 Equity and Inclusion Resolution. We, the Board of the PLSEA CTOC, endorse the 2020 Equity and Inclusion Resolution. It states, among other things, specifically that the PLSES School Board, "affirms its commitment to support the superintendent in continuing to lead district priorities to advance equity and inclusion efforts, including but not limited to professional development opportunities, increasing equitable access to a diverse workforce, and establishing a safe and secure environment that is free of implicit bias and is anti-racist for all people, notwithstanding race, ethnicity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, or membership in any other protected class," end quote. This resolution both supports our coalition's mission and is a critical step in creating and sustaining an environment where all voices count and where anti-racism work can truly be successful. It is only within this environment that healing amongst all communities can begin. The CTOC respectfully awaits the approval of this resolution to begin a partnership for the betterment of our community. As the Prior Lake Savage Education Association's Coalition for Teachers of Color, we exist to facilitate a network for educators and stakeholders where traditionally marginalized voices are heard, supported, and uplifted. Work to build a staff that reflects our student population while advocating for students' access to staff of color who share their values and experiences. Believe that anti-racism is only achievable through an indigenous democracy. Signed by the CTOC Board, Kalmita Hara, Adrianne Coplitz, Isela Santiago, and Sabrina Tapia.
That completes your presentation?
It does. Thank you for your patience for letting us do that foundational work.
Thank you. Before I open it up to questions, I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Salo, the committee members, for heading this up. But more importantly, I'd like to really thank the community members that stepped forward. That is a brave move, and I appreciate your coming forward. Looking forward to learning more. I'm almost a little envious that you guys got the firsthand experience, and some of us were not able to, but I look forward to your sharing that. So, thank you. That's very admirable. And a scary thing to do, so I appreciate your stepping forward. With that, I'll open it up for questions from the Board.
I can start. Echo the appreciation clearly for all of those who were involved in the process and also echo the little tinge of jealousy or envy for not having been able to be a part of it. We all have a lot to learn. I know I do. And so, I would have thoroughly enjoyed being a part of that process. I'm wondering if any of you could speak just ever so quickly. One of the phrases that I highlighted in here in the "whereas" about things that are problems or things that are challenges, the colorblind ideology. And I think it's worthy of maybe just expanding a little bit on that. Because I think there's probably a lot of folks that can't figure out why that's a bad thing. So I'd love to hear a thought on that.
I'm laughing because that's what my husband said was gonna be the first question, so. And then he just sent me a text saying, "I told you." Yes, so that is very important. And it's important because people don't quite understand that when you say things to a person of color, like, "Oh, I don't see color." I just see you as a woman or as a person. What that means is that you don't honestly see me. By devaluing my color or saying that my color is something that ought not to be seen, makes it feel like something about me is wrong. When you see me, you need to see all of me. And "all of me" means that I am a black woman. And by acting like saying black is negative, then you're putting a judgment on a very important part of me that I don't feel is negative. I love everything about my blackness and the culture that comes with it. So, colorblind ideology is something that we have to do better at explaining because people feel like making that statement shows that they're somehow not racist or that they're somehow a good person. And it's not to say that they're a bad person. It is to say that they don't quite understand how that, their intention behind it of trying to be, to try to say to me that "I see you as who you are," doesn't come across when you denounce who I actually am. And we have to do better at understanding that that is very much part of this ingrained systemic racism that we just saw everyday practice that Jayla was talking about earlier, about the continuous microaggressions and things like that, or, "Oh, you're pretty for a black girl," or, you know, bringing in color as an element of whether you're good or bad. That is all in the colorblind ideology, and so it has to stop.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. And can you all, can you share who, from the process of the words getting on the page, how did that come about? Who did the writing? How collaborative was that? How collaborative was that? And I mean, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that every word on here was poured over many times.
That is correct. There was a, what I'll call a first cut, which, when you have an important document, you want to have multiple drafts, and you want to have multiple readers, and you want to look at it through multiple lenses. So, the Board had a listening session, apparently with a few stakeholders, nine stakeholders, in June, I think, of this year, and then I don't know who it was that put the initial words to paper. But I brought with me, just for having the record with me, all of the different versions that we went through, and I would say the version that you have, technically, we could call it the fourth draft, but really, the back and forth and the discussions that went into what words do we want to use was intense. Every single word, every single comma you see on that page is intentional. It has a meaning. The selection of terms like Black, Indigenous, and people of color, some of those things are terms of art. Talking about, you know, diversity and inclusion, a lot of these things, again, they're terms of art. They have a meaning, and if there was anything that one or myself, anybody on it or myself did not understand, I went and researched it, or they went and researched it. I don't proclaim to be an expert in this area. What I do love is I love something that's well-written and meaningful, and if there's a word in there that wasn't worth our time, it would have been cut. So, I don't know if that helps you. I think the description that Ms. Nelson gave at the beginning was probably very helpful because there was something that was given to that initial group of stakeholders to get ideas, reactions, "We like that, we don't like that, what about this? How far does the Board want to go in what they're saying?" One of my first questions was, "How far do you want to go in setting policy? How far do you want to go?" And this is where we had done some research done and some back and forth with the School Board, the state guiding board, I'm not sure what you call them.
MSBA.
MSBA, and so that was definitely part of it. And then it came down to those really fine, fine moments, fine tuning of wordsmithing and saying, "Is this, is it getting at what we want to? Is the tone right?" I think I told Michael was that you read one time for substance, you read one time for editing, and then you always read another time for flow. And so, some words might have been chosen just to make it flow better. So, it would be a thing that would stand the test of time. I think that's something else for you to know, is that there was a lot of discussion about what's going to age well and what's not going to age well, and do we want to lock ourselves in, or do we want to give the Board the flexibility to use this as a platform? And I think we accomplished that. So, do you have any other questions about the editing process?
I'm going to just make one comment and then let my fellow Board members be able to ask some things. I think Mark Paulson said when he stood up, "I think I just want to make sure I don't screw this up." And I honestly, as a Board member, I look at the work that you have all assembled, and there's, there's nothing we could improve, in my opinion. And all I want to do is not screw it up, and so I'm going to support wholeheartedly.
I'm going to ask my question because it kind of tails off of yours, Jonathan. First of all, the document, I think, is very well-written. I'm in support of it. I do have a question. I need a little more explanation on one of the last statements in the document where it says, "We'll create more opportunities to elevate and listen to the voices of students, parents, families, staff, and community members." Then you go on to say, "who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color." I'm wondering why you pulled that group out versus all the other people that you've been listing through the whole document? Why we would, why you'd pull that out, I guess, is, I'll start with that part of my question.
Well, there may be others, I'll wait till I get up here. There may be others who also want to comment on that. But one, another piece of this that we talked about is that some of the groups that are listed in the whereas section, I'm sorry, yeah, the whereas sections, some groups that people belong to that experience prejudice, they're in a group where nobody would know that information unless they shared it, what their religion is, maybe what their sexual orientation is or their gender identity. And there are those of us who, we don't get to take off the color of our skin, we don't get to take off intergenerational trauma. And so, we thought it was really important, especially given that the nature of the growth and the development of this resolution partially came out and was probably accelerated by the racial incidents that happened over the summer in our home state, that we did call out those groups. It wasn't meant to be exclusive or exclude other people in any way, but it was really just to say, "We understand that we have to listen to these voices." It in no way means that we shouldn't be listening to everybody's voices, but simply is kind of a nod to that additional piece.
Okay, that, that's exactly where I was going. It feels like it leaves other people out when we're trying to be more inclusive, and I understand that there's more of a focus on these three groups, but I was with you until I got to that statement, put it that way. And I still will be supportive, but it feels like we're, all of a sudden, making differences that we don't want to do, as I read, as I read it and outside eyes, right?
Yeah, I can only speak from my perspective and the people I spoke with, but I want to make it too.
Yeah, no, I'll just, I'll just add to that. A lot of the intention behind that is because other marginalized groups, besides the fact that it's something that you don't necessarily see, they're Black and Brown and Indigenous people within those groups too. So, it is still inclusive of them if we look at the areas where they intersect. And part of the reality of what we were trying to address with calling out that is you will get LGBTQ religious, other marginalized women issues, you will get all that in a population when you talk to Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, because those people still represent those other populations as well. And so, part of what we were trying to ensure we did was not to say that these other marginalized groups somehow should be separated out of, and you would find a person of color who is only cisgendered, who is only a woman, or who's only this thing, and then go and find an LGBTQIA person. If you find people within that community to discuss the issues of the community, you will bring in those other marginalized issues in the conversation, just by the fact that people exist in those other marginalizations as well as being Black or Indigenous. So, that was part of the rationale behind it.
Okay, I guess I read it differently than what your intention was. When you explain it, it makes sense, but it concerns me that if it has to be explained, that maybe that needs to be looked at a little bit again, so that we're clear.
There is the brilliance behind the words.
Are there any other questions?
I know Mary brought up some additional questions that she emailed us in advance. It looks like she had to step away for a personal matter, so.
I don't have those, Enrique.
Okay, I could, I have them up here, so I could go through them one by one, if that works.
Well, we have the stakeholders here, maybe? You want, you want the, what do you mean? Do you want him to read these?
Okay, yeah, I don't have any questions from Mary.
Yeah, she had sent to Enrique and I to be careful not to send to everybody how many people were listed on the email, some questions or concerns. I do see she had to step off. I can, we can do one of two things. You can share those, or we can take them back to the committee as well before we bring it forward.
I think that would be more appropriate, that they go back to the community, to community, to the committee for discussion, unless we want to hear them now. It's not usually that we have somebody else read questions that come from another Board member. I understand that she has a personal reason that she's been called away.
Okay. I mean, I just think there are quite a few of them. If there's not consensus to move some of them forward, I don't know, as far as questioning. I mean, just want us to answer from the committee. There's like 12 or something, isn't there? How many were there? I didn't get it directly, so I didn't.
What's that, Stacy?
I said I didn't get the email correctly.
I think it would be more appropriate to bring those to the committee, and if Mary has more questions for follow-up questions to what she has to say, I think that'd be more appropriate than asking the questions that we're interpreting how she wants them read. I don't think that's fair to Mary, and it's not fair to the committee.
Are you comfortable with that, committee members? Thank you.
And we do have time. We have another work session and the Board meeting in December, so there'll be two weeks before that can be fleshed out, so.
They're on the same night.
Everyone's all right with that?
Yeah, they're on the same night, though, right? I mean.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, everyone's in agreement?
Thank you. All right, thank you to our committee members.
Okay, thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming in.
Can I, can I just hear something? I'm sorry.
Yes, I love that. Dr. Stallow has not spoken.
Very much.
We can let you speak.
That's all right, thank you. As a white female leader, you have heard me read or share this mission 1,000 times. Our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. This mission and this strategic plan gives me permission and responsibility to serve all students, and it gives me permission, responsibility, and expectation to make sure that I interrupt practices and policies that don't show or display ways where we support all, see all, hear all, encourage all to be their absolute best. The theme this year that we chose is "We Are PLSES Voices." Sarah, Neka, Jayla, Mark, Michael, Stacy, Enrique, your voices and the voices of those others on the team will now be with me in a way that is very different than the other thousands of times that you've heard me read this. My perspective is limited by my lived experience, and the only way that I can be a wise leader for all students, families, and staff in this organization is to surround myself with multiple perspectives who give me wisdom, courage, and ensure that I'm making wise decisions as I lead this district with the Board and with our team. I don't know that I've ever been more proud of work that's been done of our Board members who have led this work with passion and persistence, and in community folks who continue to show up and show up and show up until we got the words right, so the words can be turned into action. Thank you so much for sharing yourselves and for helping us all get better.
Yes, I need to clarify one thing, because it is, is it important for the Board that this come back to the work session, or are we going to bring it right to the business meeting? Would you like to answer that question after you meet again, when you have gone over, digested everything?
Why don't we do that? Perhaps we could do a follow-up with Mary.
Okay, because it won't necessarily come to the work session, it would go right to the business meeting unless you choose to bring it back to the Board.
I guess in your, I mean, I guess in your, you're okay with the wording as is, I mean.
I would simply say, in the absence of substantive change to any of the language, it could come straight to the meeting.
Okay.
In my.
All right.
And you as well?
I'm, I'm in, yep, I'm in agreement with that. Just wanted clarification as we plan the agenda going forward. Thank you. Hey, thank you. Now you're off the hook.
I'd like to give a standing ovation, because I love that work.
Okay, now we'll move on to the 2021 final budget discussion and review.
Excellent. As Julie Sink is making her way to the podium, I just want to welcome you all again tonight. And what you'll be seeing tonight is the continued work as we've looked at the revised budget for the current year, which obviously propels us and takes us into the projected budget as we move forward. I can just share the next couple, Julie, or?
Sure.
Okay, I think actually the next one, if you want to share that. And you've heard Julie say this as well, the next slide is simply our strategic plan, which obviously budget decisions are about what it is that we value, and we know that the strategic plan with the priority work is certainly that which we base all of our decisions on, and that becomes difficult as we're in a time where we are looking at budgets, and because of the enrollment slide that you're going to see next, we know that we've got continued work to do in order to revise this current year budget.
So, every, good evening, chairs and make Board members, Dr. Stallow. Tonight, we are talking a little bit about our revised budget, and really, this revised budget begins the work that will start for the next several months on the next year's budget in the following years, and what does, what are those assumptions for us to begin that work? But we really needed to have a really good look and a solid look at where are we today? Enrollment, of course, as you know, drives our budget, and October 1 numbers, that's really important because we start to get paid based on, from the state of Minnesota, based on those October 1 numbers, but our final enrollment numbers is what we get our total revenue from. And so, as we work through that, we've always talked about our enrollment being that, that we would lose those 70 students throughout the year. And as, this is a very different year than every year that we have had in the past, we have seen quite a dip in the last month and a half of 55 students that have been lost, and they're not all at the high school and secondary level, and so many of them are coming as well from our elementary school. And so, you can see our enrollment for November 16th at the elementary K5 was 3,006, 32, which is down almost 20 students, 21, actually. And then, we also are down a few students at the middle level, 10 there since October 1, and of course, we're seeing that dip at the high school level as well, as expected. So, we are changing a little bit when, as we work through this budget, is looking at 100-student decrease from October 1 through the end of the year. So, that's a 262 student or ADM decline from where we had the original budget of 125 students increased. I truly believe that this would not be a year of COVID, that we would have seen that 250-student increase this year. We had budgeted 125. I truly believe we would have seen that 250. We were well on our way on, in July, we were 202-students increase since the previous year. We see a large increase typically in August, so I do believe we would have made that 250-student increase. Dr. Stallow, if you want to talk about this?
Yeah, we just, we put in these slides again, just wanted to remind you, and again, as we see those declines in our district, we know that statewide, many districts are struggling with the same thing. AMSD, which, in which we're a member, did a survey of the 43 districts, and we just highlighted a couple here, but the majority of the districts, I think all but three, are showing that they have declining enrollment as well from what was projected. And this is not updated from the last time we shared it, but I'm confident that districts are seeing something similar to us. And the next slide is also a repeat that you've seen, and this was the kindergarten numbers, just showing again that not only do we have a decline in what we projected in terms of kindergarten numbers, but other districts do as well. So, we just wanted to be sure that we set that context as well. Thanks, Julie.
So, we kind of stayed with this theme of that was then, this is now. I'm looking back at what we had approved for our revenue budget based on 125 additional students and 2% in the basic formula, as well as increases in special education, achievement and integration, and some students attending from another district, that $3.8 million. Looking at what it is now, I think this number of estimated change in revenue of 262 students less is a little bit higher than I originally projected, and a lot of, there's several reasons for this, but some of it has to do with we are receiving some declining enrollment revenue that I hadn't had in originally, and there's some other factors as well. And so, overall, I'm also not seeing as large of a special education decline there for this first year, and so, we're seeing a negative $1.1 million from where we started the year in revenue. And then as, there's some other revenue changes as well. We definitely are seeing some loss of local revenue simply because we aren't having activities, we aren't having parking fees, those other things that we are not seeing as much as we have in the past, as well as interest revenue that we are not seeing come in because interest rates are so low at this point. So we're also seeing that increase in revenue due to the coronavirus relief funds. I have, as we look through this budget, I'm going to show you where we've created an assigned category. I think it's a good idea to put it in an assigned category simply because we can track it that way. And then it doesn't become part of our budget. We're wondering why it went up a little bit and then it went down, and we can actually see that happening. And then because it does have some specific uses and-
But those Corona relief funds can't be for things that were originally in the budget, right?
That's correct.
The whole amount?
The whole amount.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Correct. So those coronavirus relief funds, these are what affect the general fund. We do have some also affecting the community education fund and some affecting the food service fund. So it's not all in the general fund, but some portion, the largest portion, of course, is in the general fund. And so you're seeing another revenue change, which is an increase, but of course, we also have an increase in expenditures due to that as well, offsetting. And then you saw the approved expenditures, that was then, we had an estimated increase of $2.62 million. With those adjustments, we are, we, if you kind of think back is when we had a question at our audit about how do we go through and make these reductions? And it has to be some incremental adjustments. And so we really looked at this year, what kind of some adjustments can we make in the current year that could help us in the future? These are one-time adjustments. And so you're going to see a decrease in some of our expenditures, but next year, they'll go right back to where they were until we go through this process again of making some adjustments to our budget for next year's, for next year. And so we have reduced our supply budgets district-wide by $560,000. We do have some personnel reallocating expenses to restricted funds. And so we have the ability, we carried over some funds in some restricted areas because we didn't spend them last year because of the coronavirus and shutting down schools. So we're able to like free up some unrestricted funds and spend them out of restricted. Unfilled positions, we have $492,000 of unfilled positions. We've really looked at that this year to say, will they continue to be unfilled? And for now, we believe they will. It really depends on what happens this spring and after, after the holidays to see what happens for bringing back students and staff. We know we have reduced substitute teacher costs. That's about $400,000 that we are looking at here for those reductions. And that could change still, could and continue to increase. It just really depends on what happens. And so this is our best estimate through the rest of the year. And then, of course, we have some increased costs due to the federally mandated COVID leaves that we are seeing, some increased costs that we weren't anticipating as well. I have a, nothing by our savings in utilities and energy right now. It's a hard one to pin down. We're looking at that, really is, has a big effect on. How cold is our winter? How much energy will we use? And so we do know as well that we will see some savings there. Jim and I are trying to work through that, what that number is. But that one is a tough one to pin down. It may be something that we will look at as each month goes and we'll report to the board and say that we anticipate this savings and maybe coming back to the board for another adjustment. And then we have that $2.3 million of COVID expenditures that we anticipate will be spent this year. The big majority of that has to be spent by December 30th. And so you'll see that the majority of this will be spent. There are some smaller funds, the GERS and ESSER funds, which could be, that we're really still looking at for this next, at the beginning of 2021 here, and then looking at what are those needs that the district will have. So we have a total of increased expenditures of $682,155. And then some restricted funds adjustments outside of the unassigned area. What we usually typically do is allow carryover. So those fund balances that are in these restricted funds, we allow them to be brought into the expenditures for this year so they can spend those, that money this year if they choose to. So ALC targeted services is another 147. So these are funds that we currently have on hand that we're allowing them to spend down. Staff development is 315,000. Actually, we, from our budget, because we have lost so many students, that learning and development is a total decrease there. Safe schools, we're anticipating spending an extra $25,000. Achievement and integration, we had a little bit of carryover of 13, little, almost $14,000. Long-term facility maintenance is 245, and operating capital is 725. And those increases in LTFM and operating are really to do with the construction budget simply because as we were going through construction, those things, I didn't know how much each year they would be spending, be just depending, just depending on when those events happened. And so I've kind of budgeted for them each year, but if we didn't use them, we carried them over, now we're spending them. And so we know we're at the end of our construction period and we'll be spending those funds down. They were planned expenditures, I just didn't know when exactly they would happen. So this was the preliminary budget in the general fund. And you can see what those numbers are, and I wanted to make sure you saw both of them. And actually, the revised budget, I do have one adjustment in here that you're, that is not on your information. As I reviewed it, I did not move the assigned carryover to be spent. So it needs to be spent and shown as being spent. And so I missed that unfortunately as I was creating this. And it's in my big spreadsheet, it just got missed on this one. So that's my error and I want to make sure-
Revised, under the revised. So $628,000?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So. And then as we, so you can see, actually, you can see that our fund, our unassigned fund balance looks pretty good still because we're making the adjustments, these one-time adjustments this year. And we're seeing some, a little bit of offset just because of the declining enrollment. We are seeing some, that it looks, doesn't look as bad as we anticipated. But I will caution you as we get into next year with those one-time funds going away, it's, and depending on how we look at enrollment for the future, that will be a big driver of, of the next year's budget. And so you can see a lot of our fund in our fund balances in that restricted areas also being spent down. If you look at the audited fund balances compared to the estimated, you can see we're spending all of those down as well. So it's about a $6 million overall decrease in our fund balance, but in the unassigned, it's about a $2.5 million decrease there from that 14 million down to the 12,4 is what that new number is. Any questions about any of this? It's a lot of information we've been talking about. This is a large budget where we are, you know, not over $100 million budget. There's a lot of components to this budget that we need to take into consideration. And as we look through to the next couple of years, we'll be looking at all of those components and seeing how they affect our, our budget. And if we want to look at the preliminary budget for all other funds, the biggest piece of these other funds, you can see our food service, we are spending that down. That also has to do with construction when that is hitting. You can see our high school kitchen was the biggest component of that, and that all happened in this fiscal year. And so you'll see us spending some of that down. We are getting a larger reimbursement for all of the meals that we're serving under the summer food program. But mainly, the reason that this is being spent down isn't because of that, it's really because of the construction, the planned expenditures there as well. And if we look at community education, they originally had, were going to see a large increase in their fund balance. They unfortunately are not able to do that, but they are able to maintain that fairly well through this. So we're looking at that-
Being the $6 million in comparison to the $3 million?
Right.
And that's because of the, oh, they did-
Can you just repeat that?
Oh, that's because of the, the increase in, the decrease in revenue from community is because of?
The United Office of the Programs.
Oh, okay. Right, okay. I just want to make sure.
Yep. So you can see we're planning on spinning down all of our construction fund. Really isn't any changes in our debt service custodial, internal service fund. Those are remaining the same. Any questions? So here we have our next steps. In December, we'll have our truth in taxation hearing. We'll be looking at our approval of our revised budget. Those two things we do together, but they don't really go hand in hand. You know, we're not a county or a city where the budget, where the levy drives our budget in the, in our current year. Our levy is for next year, even though we're approving our revised budget, what we're approving in December affects next year's budget. And then we'll be looking at the board really to develop our parameters for our budget for '21, '22, and really beyond. Because those will be the drivers for what we want our, you know, where does the board want to go with that? We'll be bringing budget scenarios based on those parameters for '21, '22 throughout our budget process, monitoring our student enrollment, monitoring those things that we have talked about already, our utility cost, our sub-costs, those kinds of things that could affect the current year budget and future budget as well. And then really our legislative updates. I've heard a few things already. Because of the free and reduced lunch, I'm, you know, if anybody is listening, I recommend that people, if you've applied in the past and haven't this year, please do so because it does affect our budget. I think throughout the state of Minnesota, school districts are losing $157 million in revenue because families don't have a need to apply for free and reduced lunch. And so the state is saving those funds. School districts will be losing those funds. That's the latest number I've heard. And so it is important that families, if you have applied in the past and you think you can qualify, it's important for you to apply because the schools receive funding for those, both in federal and state funding, because all of our title funds as well are based on that economic indicator.
Go ahead. Okay. Apologize if you, I don't think you said this one, but on the other funds, what, what's up with the OPEP? Did I miss this part?
Okay, so our auditor-
Yeah.
-changed how he-
Yeah.
-presented that. We do, we do have money there. And that's why it's so frustrating to see that.
Oh, yeah.
So this, we do have about $8 million, over $8 million there in that fund. But this is, the $3 million was short from that implicit rate, which we never really think that we're going to hit. And so I'm not really sure how you want to see this. I think it looks very odd as well. So, but we do have money there, but it's required by our auditor that, that shows us the negative, what we're short-
Of the-
-of the total funding.
Oh, okay. So given the-
11 million.
-out there for potential post-retirement.
True.
Is another $3 million-
That's unmet.
Yeah, there's another $3 million whatever than up, so there's a lot, we should have like, what they're saying, you should have 11 million, basically, something in there. Okay. Well, you know.
Well, then that would mean it would show a zero if we have 11 million.
I think it's weird.
Or I could make some sort of notation on there that the district has, you know.
Well, it makes it look like we don't-
That might be helpful.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So what's changing is they're changing the calculation of the liability.
They're showing the calc, they're showing the liability as what we're deficit when we actually have enough funding to meet our actual liability. What we don't have funding for is the implicit rate subsidy, which we'll never need to pay. And so it doesn't make sense for the district to try and keep accumulating money that we won't spend.
They keep changing this. I mean, it's like they keep moving it more towards that direction, but it is extremely confusing for the average person to look at this and think, what does this mean? Looks like you're, especially when it's in the negative.
I agree.
Yeah, a notation would be helpful.
I think a notation of some sort because it makes us look like we don't know what we're talking about.
We've had quite lively discussions in my office about how we present this, so. But this is how the auditor is requiring this, and so I need to show it this way, but I can certainly make a notation to say that's-
Please do. I think that makes more sense to me. I don't know what other, but it makes it look like we don't know what we're doing and we do, so.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Mm-hmm. There any other questions? Jonathan?
Um, just, just in general, for all of your tuning in and talking to colleagues in this work, Stacy and I were in the delegate assembly pre-meeting where MSBA people were talking about how, what they were going to lobby for. And we talked about things like holding harmless for not, not having applications for free and reduced price lunch because that will directly impact students so severely, and other districts harder than ours perhaps. But also the, you know, possibilities of holding harmless pupil counts or using the greater of like this October versus, you know, that October for calculating revenue from the state. Are you picking up on, on any of that or is that all just, in your opinion, way too hopeful?
A bill went to both the House and Senate to hold districts harmless. It went nowhere. And so I'm not optimistic about that. That doesn't mean, they're in special session, so maybe that just means they don't want to do anything in special session. We certainly will be pushing for that as well. I'm hearing that they're really looking at saving the funding because the state won't be in a great place cash-wise as well as shifting school district funding from a 90-10 where we received 90% of our funding in the current year and 10% in the following year to something less than that. I have not heard what that is, but if you recall in 2014, we were shifted all the way to 60-40. So I don't anticipate that will happen in one year. However, I wouldn't be surprised at a 75-25 or 70-30. I think it will be more than a 80-20. That's, that's a guess as well, so I mean, don't hold me to that, but I, I know that the, they are deficit spending $6 billion, and so I believe that that will. I have not heard anything from all of my sources that has said that there's any hope for any of that, but I don't want to be that negative. I gotta hope that they're going to do something for schools. And I don't know if there will be another COVID relief package coming out. And if there is, we're really hoping that there's a way that they will allow us to supplant instead of supplement so that we can utilize it for that deficit spend that we've been planning for these students, they're not here, can we use it for that? We're hoping maybe there is some additional funding for that as well. But I have not heard anything about that either, so. But that's always a possibility as well.
Thank you.
I just have a quick one. The, the special ed increase being less than what was anticipated, do we have fewer students? Is that change in that formula different than what we were anticipating?
So when you're a growing district, you get additional revenue for the additional students that you have. Because we're no longer a growing district, we don't, we won't see that revenue. But we-
Again, mostly a function of enrollment.
Any other questions? Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Capital Project Tech Levy. Jeff and Marcus?
All right. Good evening, Chair Shemek, members of the board. Dr. Stallow, Mr. Malazo and I, socially distant, are up here this evening to continue our conversation and dialogue around a technology levy discussion for the board. Our presentation tonight has several distinct portions that we're going to start and talk a little bit about a brief history lesson, a recap of why we're here. We'll also be doing, so we'll be going over what we talked about the last study session. We'll also be doing, so we'll be going over what we talked about the last study session. At that point, as a board, you'd asked us to go out and get more information and feedback from stakeholders, notably students and staff regarding technology, devices, largely because the student experience, the, the teaching experience, but also that does drive some of the budgetary components too, as a board, as you continue to talk about a technology levy. And then we'll just, at the end of this evening, again, encourage your discussion, questions, and just provide us additional questions or provide us additional steps moving forward. So as a board, you can continue to have this conversation around a tech levy. So, back on August 3rd, we, we had spent the time talking about, you know, areas of a potential technology levy. And really where this whole topic came out of was last spring's budget conversation. Looking at what are some of those long-term revenues as a district we should be looking at? And out of that process, a capital projects levy or a technology levy, also interchangeably used, came out of that process. And as a board, directing administration to start looking at what does that look like for Prior Lake Savagery schools? And so Mr. Malazzo and I spent considerable amount of time going through and spent, and doing a lot of the planning, internal look. And what you see there highlighting in yellow was the lion's share of what we brought forward to you on August 3rd. Was really kind of the back of the house, what, what is the current overview of our, of the department and technology currently look like? So I'm going to turn that over to him to kind of do a quick refresh, and then we'll get back into really bringing you that updated information on the staff and student stakeholder feedback.
Good evening. As Jeff mentioned, the next couple of slides are a, a review of our meeting from August 3rd. So I'm going to go through them quickly. Stop me if you have any questions. So, this first slide here is a tech budget overview, and it, it is a comparison from 2019, 2020, 2021. And you see there what we have listed is software, hardware, salary, consultants, e-content subscriptions, district cell phones, and assessments. So, not a lot of change between the years, but it's, it's good to review. This slide is our, our comparison of how we're staff compared to our neighbors. The mobile device inventory, this is, has changed, not so much the numbers, but the types of devices. Since August 3rd, we have had to pivot and go to a K-12, or in some cases, E-12, one-to-one. So what we did is we pulled apart every cart of Chromebooks that we owned in the district. And so those Chromebooks are no longer in carts, but they are in the hands of our students. Our iPads as well. We, we had iPad 4s and iPad minis, and, and they were seven years plus. And as far as age, and what we did is, is some of this COVID relief funding became available and some other revenue streams, what we were able to do is leverage those funds and upgrade the iPad minis. So, six or eight just got their new iPads through, through that relief fund. And, and we'll be able to e-recycle those iPad minis and get them out of the rotation. Again, they're over seven years old. What we were hearing from our stakeholders was battery life, you know, just general age of the equipment. Could not upgrade the iOS to the latest and greatest, so we were losing some functionality there. So, again, we were able to act quickly and get new devices in the hands of our middle school kids. So, I'm happy about that and the ability to do that. So thanks for everybody that was involved in making that happen. Next couple of slides are just, again, some of the, the review of some of the options we brought forward in August, at August 3rd meeting. And we're going to talk more about devices and what we heard from our stakeholders later on in the presentation. So, again, these are just reviews of some of the options we brought forward. It's, you know, in this one, it's a mix of iPads and Chromebooks. Option six was iPads, Chromebooks, and then MacBook Airs. This slide was, the board at the time asked, you know, what does average repair cost? And, and this is holding true even today, now that we have even more devices in the hands of our students. Is, this is what we're averaging for, even though this slide is, refers back to August 3rd, bless you. It is, it goes to, it's, it's holding true, and it's staying pretty, pretty current as far as what we're experiencing with replacement costs. We break a lot of screens, and it happens, accidents happen, so that's just one of the realities. So that's what we see quite a bit. This slide refers to our levy referendum comparison, again, with our neighbors, and we covered this back in August 3rd. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Holberg so that he can explain this slide that we did present back in August 3rd about the tax impact.
Thanks, Marcus. Back on the tax impact, as part of our presentation of the board for discussion, was looking at three different potential levy amounts, two and a half million, three and a half million, four and a half million, and what that impact would look like. Again, just giving the board the standpoint of what that tax impact would be relative to capital projects or technology levy as you continue to deliberate. And so, again, this is just a quick recap of what we talked about on, on August 3rd. And again, out of this came the, the question of, you know, again, with the options, you saw option five and six. We had several other options that we'd also presented that evening. And as a board, the direction you gave us was really to talk about what is, what is the staff experience? What, what are staff saying about devices? What are students saying about devices? And so that's what we're here to update you on night for the new information. And so, again, you heard some key pieces here. As a result of, of COVID-19, we've pivoted from a 8-12 one-to-one district to an E-12 one-to-one district. So carts, you see a lot of things that have been broken down and redistributed. You heard earlier, Julie, talk about the coronavirus relief funds and using those dollars for things that were not budgeted to, you know, basically to supplant. Without the coronavirus relief funds, it would be, it would have been very difficult for the district to, number one, go to one-to-one, let alone replace those iPad minis and that aging equipment for our students. But because of the necessity of going one-to-one and having students have their own devices for distance learning, that funding mechanism did help us. But also, where we started with our one-to-one initiative quite a few years ago, it was used for, we paid for that out of capital expenditures and existing budget. It was not funded out of a tech levy or a capital projects levy. And so you see that comparison. As a district, we've never had a technology levy. Though, the devices and technology that we've been able to provide to students and for that student and staff experience has been out of our district's general fund. So, we're going to spend some time talking a little bit about what we did. We, we surveyed staff, employees, and students in grades 3-12. Looking at, we didn't look at kindergarten, first, or second grade, just from the standpoint of, you know, obviously, they would have a lot to, to share and offer. But we also spent, realized that probably our intermediate students would be able to give us maybe a little bit more direct perspective on how they were using the device all the way up to 12. And then from there, we also broke out into focus groups for elementary, middle school, and high school students, gathering the narrative around, you know, the survey that was, was sent out. So let's break down the employees first. Employee survey was sent out via email. There were five questions, 417 responses. Overwhelmingly, you see a, a high teacher staff that, that participated in the survey. But we also had secretarial staff, paraprofessionals, administration, child nutrition services, operations of ground. And we're excited to see that, because as a, as a district, everyone has a primary function central to our mission and vision, and that's to help the students, help the organization. And that feedback is absolutely key critical in order to have, for those individuals to feel successful in their job in the district. And so we'll get into, so that's exciting to see, and I'm very, we're very thankful that they participated in that. You also see the surveys by grade level with the employees from early childhood, people who selected that they support all grades or not applicable. And then you see the breakdowns by grade bands, 3-5, K-2, 9-12, 6-8. Reason why it's out of org, why the, why the groups are out of org, out of, are disorganized a little differently is based on the graph. We had a higher percentage of, of grade six through eight employees participate in the survey. We also asked employees which devices they're currently using. And these are a balance of school-issued devices, but also devices that people are using at home. We have, so people indicated Windows laptop, Chromebook, iPad, HP desktop, and MacBook Air. The high percentage of, of teaching staff participating will all have a MacBook Air. That's why we have a high level of people indicating that they use MacBook Airs. Also too, as Mr. Malazzo has presented in previous presentations, all of our classrooms with the smartboards have an HP desktop in them as well. And so teachers are using, can use both, either for the mobility of the, of the MacBook Air as well as the HP desktop in their classroom. How do employees use the devices? This is a breakdown, and, and you see a real high percentage of what, of productivity tools that staff are using for their jobs. And you see, you know, across the board, and, and this is, we're very happy to see that, from curriculum to apps, software. And then you start to see the application and creation of, in collaboration with other colleagues, and then accessing the internet. I want you to kind of remember the percentages here. 60% and above for all of these, because when we get to the student one, I'm going to, we'll, we'll see a little bit of a difference. We also spent some time asking employees, what else do you need your devices to do? And this is a slide we have to pay particular attention to. The number one thing, or the, one of the prevailing items that came across was being able to preview the student experience. And when you dig deeper into that comment, it was, if I have a MacBook Air and my students have an iPad, if we're asking students to do something different, we're not necessarily able to see the student experience from the device that we have. Or if we're ask, if, if with some of our paraprofessionals that have a Chromebook, and they're working with students and students have an iPad, they're not able to transfer or essentially replicate or preview that experience that students have. So it's a bit of a, something that has to be navigated from the teaching and support standpoint for the student experience. Hybrid and distance learning, showing multiple screens or windows. And this was really, we'll, we'll highlight this a bit here too. A lot of times, students and staff are saying, you know what? We use our, our MacBook Airs to be able to do our Google Meet. We have our desktop computers with other windows open in order to see the presentation or whatever, or to see another document. You know, for some people, I like to see myself present, but then I can't see the presentation. If I'm seeing the presentation, I can't see my students, you know, that are, that are on the, the Google Meet. And so you see people using multiple devices during a distance or hybrid learning. Again, as we look at our remote learning and distance learning from COVID-19, absent of COVID, I don't think we would have, I don't think we would have understood this. So I, I guess I wouldn't say it's a silver lining, but certainly the amount that staff are relying on technology is giving us a very rich perspective about how they're using it, the functionality and effectiveness. Camera usage is also a big one too. Students demonstrating or, or showing their work, either through taking a picture and sending it through School G or CSO, or vice versa from, from staff as well. And then also secretaries. One, one note in particular, we were able to pull from the secretarial participants is, you know, secretaries are working in their office, they have an HP desktop. However, as we start looking at remote work, that is something that did start coming up. How, how does that work, you know, with an HP desktop? As we look at employees, and again, you can recall the, the percentage of people who, who participated. The rank choice device preferences, MacBook Air. You know, overwhelmingly, the comments, people really appreciate the mobility, the functionality, the hard drive, the ability to, you know, do internet searches as well as do things locally on their, on their computer. HP desktop was the first choice of secretarial staff. And then from there, it kind of goes to that Windows laptop. We do have, have some individuals that have HP laptops as well, iPad, and then, and then the last choice for staff is Chromebook. So, what this helps us with is as we plan moving forward on a capital projects levy, we would want to focus our, for our teaching, teaching staff, having, looking at a MacBook Air as our continued product or continued device in helping them, you know, do their work as teachers and working with students. From there, we'll kind of shift to the students' survey part. This was, we sent the survey to students through our learning management system, either School G or through CSO. With a number of survey responses, there were eight items we asked them to respond to. We had 700, 1,733 responses. A very high middle school participation rate, which we love seeing. You know, certainly because, you know, if you're sixth, seventh, and eighth grader, you've got a few more years in the Prior Lake Savagery school pipeline from the standpoint of engagement, and then ultimately too with our elementary. So, from our, what devices are students currently using? And you start to see that breakdown. Certainly, students in Prior Lake Savagery schools are either issued an iPad or a Chromebook. But you also see too, students using other devices at home as well in their work. And we'll, and that, the survey will, or the focus groups will also shed some light on that. What are devices commonly used for? And you start to see some of these same things that staff are using it for, but you see a, a marked decrease in the percentage of what they're actually using these tools for. We, we intentionally didn't leave personal, left personal use off of it. Certainly, I'm sure students are using it for a variety of reasons, but evidently, not a lot of them are creating or editing spreadsheets, or at least depending on the class that they're in. So, again, humorous, but also you kind of see the, the perspective of, of what students are, are sharing. The ranked choices for students, as you think MacBook Air, Chromebook, Windows laptop, and an iPad, from the survey. From there, we, Mr. Malazzo, Chris Lynn Goodman, our Director of Evaluation Research, went out, and we worked with our tech integration specialists and with our, our principals to set up and find student groups to talk to. And we were looking for diverse participants. We didn't want all the tech gurus. Likewise, we didn't want people who really, you know, students who really struggled with technology. We wanted a balance. We wanted to try to figure out what's working really well, what are challenges? And so we were looking for a device use and experience. We're also looking for expertise. You know, some of the students were, were SWAT kids. Those are the students that are highly techie in our schools. And some are, you know, students that, you know, just, you know, just by the, the teachers knowing them, our tech integration specialists knowing them, say, hey, you have a great voice, let's get you involved in this process. And then also demographically, diversity in, in the students we're talking to. Gender, students of color, across the board. We did do this in person several weeks ago, physically distant, masked, you know. And, and then we also allowed students who were participating in distance learning to also participate in this process remotely as well. So we had in-person students, and we also had students at home, or in distance format. In, we're going to break it down by elementary, middle school, and high school. Insights that we received from our elementary students is students do, do a good deal of typing. You know, the necessity of having a keyboard. The size of the, of the device is important too. You know, you have mobility and you have backpacks. You know, certainly a smaller device would be less cumbersome than a larger device. Camera placement, and then drawing capabilities too. Just from the standpoint of in science or some of those other things where they're drawing, or in the case of the iPad, using the Notability app, which, you know, you, you're receiving some, you know, and use your finger and you, on an iPad, you're, you're drawing out an answer or sharing an answer with that. Their preference was a Chromebook, but their desire was for a touchscreen, you know, and a keyboard and a stylus. And we'll talk about that too here in just a little bit. This was really, working with elementary students was really a great, great experience. They, you know, they kind of controlled the conversation. You know, they, they really didn't need a lot of prompting. I always thought it was good, I thought it was great, because they asked, one, one of the students asked, asked us if, you know, Mr. Malazzo, Ms. Goodman and I were like good friends. And it's like, well, of course we are. You know, we, we hang out all the time, we work a lot, we're close, you know. And then they asked me if I was a professional. And so I had, I said, well, certainly on, most days I'm professional, you know, and that type of thing. So, it was really a, a great experience, again, talking with students and hearing their insights. But you can see some of the, some of the feedback that, that they were, they were also, that they were also sharing too. It was interesting too, and we didn't put this up here, is we sort of asked word of mouth, you know, Chromebook or the stylus, what if you had like, say, a MacBook? And a lot of kids were like, yes, you know, that would be great because it's Apple. But one student, a couple of students did point out, the Chromebook, one of the limitations is it is an online device. You need to have Wi-Fi. And so the challenge is if, if you don't have Wi-Fi, doesn't allow us to... And so the challenge is if, if you don't have Wi-Fi, doesn't allow us to do some of the things. And I think, you know, as board members at the last couple of times, at the August 3rd meeting, I think that was something that one of the board members brought up around having a hard drive for students to work locally on a device without Wi-Fi. And so it's, you know, it is, it is a theme that does start to emerge in our conversations with kids. Middle school, you see some similar things. Keyboarding is essential, compatibility with our learning management system for efficiency, touchscreen, keyboards, stylus, all desired. They also said, too, in addition to what we receive, all students are using personal devices as well. Again, the multiple screens of participating in a Google Meet and then being able to do the homework on a different device. Preference, Chromebook preferred over an iPad, but the MacBook Air was 100% that would be what they would want. And they also pointed out, too, the hard drive piece, you know, not, so. High school, this was interesting, too. They felt the, the Chromebooks were restrictive relative to the Wi-Fi piece. They, the hard drive was desired to be able to work on things without have, necessarily having Wi-Fi access. Touchscreen, keyboard, stylus, all desired compatibility with the learning management system. Again, all students are using personal devices in concert with their school issued device. And then their preference, MacBook Air and Windows, a Windows device. That seemed to be the one thing that really came through was a Windows device. This was kind of a strong theme of this focus, of the, of the high school focus group.
They mentioned Surface quite a bit, too.
Yeah.
In our focus group, what the high school kids is.
So we'll talk about that, I'll have you talk about that shortly here in just a second. So here's what our takeaways, you know, what, what functions or tasks are critical moving forward from the student focus group perspective. Keyboard, touchscreen, stylus, battery life. Battery li, battery life is a, is an issue, especially with our older equipment. Our middle school, we, we met with them prior to the seventh and eighth graders getting the new iPads. Battery life was a significant challenge. I mean, they, it wouldn't hold a charge during the day. And then also software access. And I believe that had, that was also a hard drive related issue as well.
Correct.
So our device options to explore for students, and I'm going to turn it over to Marcus to talk about those and, and give kind of some overview perspective on that.
Going back to it, this slide here is with the student takeaways and the functionality that they're looking for, again, the keyboard, the touchscreen, stylus, battery life, and software access. Is there one device that does all that? Maybe, you know, to be determined. It was, tackle what Mr. Holberg said, it was a lot of fun going out, meeting with the students and listening. As a former teacher, I thoroughly enjoyed it. It's always good to get back in the buildings and hear and see kids and just to hear their perspectives and their feedback and, you know, a lot of the kids brought up the battery life with the iPad minis. And, and as a former teacher and now as a director of tech, I'm thinking, well, how many apps you got to open? But I also know that, hey, this is an older device and it's also, you know, we know with, as these devices age, their battery capacity is, it decreases and it's limited. So again, it was really great to hear that feedback directly from, from our kiddos. And going back to this slide here. There we go, thank you. There was a desire, they like Chromebooks. The elementary kids loved them from what we heard, but they were so big and they, they made their backpacks heavier, and which they do. I mean, they're 14-inch screen and they, their backpacks only have so much real skate. So having a, a wee one carry around a backpack filled with their supplies, their lunchbox, and their, and their Chromebook, we heard about it and they, they let us know that they're big. They like them, but they're really big and they don't have room in their backpacks. But they, they really wanted, our Chromebooks don't have touch capabilities and that's something that they were really felt strongly about, that they thought they would be more productive and useful if they did have touch capabilities. Keyboards came up in every group. Lot, and I think that's, you know, we could attribute that to the fact that there's a lot of document creation, whether it's in Office 365 or G Suite, I think. And I know that our students are doing a lot of document creation and it's hard to do on an iPad with the on-screen keyboard. They're probably better on their phones with their thumbs. But it's, the reality is, it's, it's hard to knock out a paper with that on-screen keyboard. So we heard about a physical keyboard time and time again. They do have keyboards for iPads, but as we, as we look at and increasing this functionality with the devices, that does add to the, the overall price tag. And I just want to be really transparent about that, is that if, if there is this device out there that checks all the boxes, we're going to need some peripherals or add-ons and that will have an impact on, on a potential tech levy or what we go out for and to cover those costs. So just please be aware of that. Again, I mentioned earlier, the Surface came up at the high school and I was kind of surprised to hear that. I think students like, we, and the reason why I was surprised is that we haven't offered a Surface in the district before. It's not a device that, I mean, I, I know many, many years back when we originally went out for, you know, a one-to-one, it was, we looked at iPads and Surface, we looked at a, a number of devices, there was Dells mixed in there. So we looked at, Stacy, you remember, you're not in your head. So we looked at a lot of different devices and that's the last time we looked at a Surface. And they, I know they've come a long way, but I was just, it was interesting to me to hear that that was something that the high school kids really thought would be a good fit in some way, shape, or form, because it does have a stylus and touchscreen and a keyboard and a kickstand and some other things. So that came up and I just, it, I thought it was interesting. And then overall choice, every time we asked about devices, hand shot for the MacBook Airs. I just, I think they love the idea and concept of having a, a Mac, an Apple product that has a solid state drive, has a physical keyboard, doesn't have touchscreen, but it doesn't have a stylus, but it has some other functionality that I think students were really interested in. So those were my observations, so. Want me to keep going on this slide?
Yeah.
Device options to explore for staff, as Mr. Holberg mentioned and as the data shows that we collected from our, our staff, our stakeholders that are teachers, is that the MacBook Air has been a valuable tool. I think people appreciate and recognize that. Not everybody in the district has a MacBook Air. We, again, what is mentioned is secretarial staff and other office workers have HP workstations that are running either Windows 7 or Windows 10. And we're working through that process, get them all up to 10. So that needs to be considered, too, is what do we do for staff members who are in an office or are not teaching staff? So that, we can't lose sight of that as well. The desktops, I believe, have a place in our district. We just need to identify what that is and, and the rationale behind it, so. But I don't want to lose sight of that. As you know, the, we pulled iPads from staff to redistribute to students. iPads did come up, but not in huge numbers through what we saw. I mentioned the HP desktop and, and the other staff or groups that use them. And then we do have a very select few of individuals that have an HP laptop as well, but those, that number is very, very small. But if, if we're looking at, you know, HP desktops for office staff is that HP laptop with a dock that's on, you know, because what we find a lot is that it's screen real state. People who are working in the office spaces or administrative, they're looking for a larger screen, multiple screens to, to take their work and spread it out so that they can, they can be more productive. So one of the advantages of a laptop is portability and you can take it anywhere. But one of the, what I would argue is one of the negatives or downsides is that you're limited with screen space and real, screen reality. So we, we constantly get requests for, is there a way I can hook this up to a second monitor because I want to take my work and spread it out? And, back in this presentation earlier, a couple of slides, that was discovered and covered as well as that, that screen real state and the ability to want to take that and spread that out across multiple devices, so. I'll pass it back to Mr. Holberg for timelines and next steps.
So again, this was a follow-up to the third of, of really, again, coming out there to say, bring us more feedback regarding sta, staff and students. I mean, tonight, there's, there's not a choice we're asking any board members to make, but we just, again, wanted to bring that back to you and provide that information, allow this to open up for you to ask any questions, but also provide us some, some direction for next steps. You know, do you want us to keep, you, would you like us to go out and start to research these different options a little bit more? As we look at that slide that we kind of highlighted, the three parts of, of a tech levy, that, you know, there is another component of looking at staffing around that as well. I know the last board meeting, our tech integration specialist provided an update of how they're supporting staff. It's a great showcase of their ta, time and talents of how they're supporting staff in distance learning. But there, and there's also a back of the house group, the ones that make all the widgets and the lights work, everything's plugged in, you know, that we also have to consider as well, too. And so those are, would be possible next steps. But at this point, we want to open up for discussion for the board. You know, any follow-up questions and then ultimately, too, next steps that you'd like to see us do and, and move forward from here.
Any questions? I have some. Go ahead, Stacy. Okay, so just, and you maybe answered this in August, but August seems like a lifetime ago, so I'm going to ask it because I don't know if I did or not. On the department staffing comparison for the 15 technology staff, where are the tech integrationists? Are they in this, or are they under teaching and learning?
They're in this, but they're, yes, they're included in this number, that is correct.
They are?
Yes.
So they're not considered teaching and learning? That's, I just didn't know.
So how they're funded, some of our, our, they are TOSSAs, so they're teachers on special assignment.
Right.
So they are teachers. Their funding source either comes from the technology department or staff development because they provide the support to staff.
Okay, so this isn't necessarily all four of them, is that what you're saying, or?
They are included in the ratio calculation.
Okay.
But from a budgeting standpoint, yes.
Okay, sorry, got to be clear. As far as on the elementary, you know, you're talking about, you know, their area, what they, what they preferred, it was a keyboard. Now, you know, anecdotally, what I hear sometimes, and I don't, you know, I hear snippets, obviously. So is there a difference between first and third needs and fourth and sixth, like, like as far as a writing or, like, I've seen kindergartners use the iPads, they can do some pretty cool things out on the screen and that kind of interactive. They're not necessarily doing reports? Where like, I know a fourth to sixth grade teachers were like really begging for things with keyboards. So I just, when it said elementary, I didn't know if that was a cart blank like everybody or could there be a difference between one to three or whatever?
There certainly could be a difference. So when we looked at three, four, or five, you know, we expect, I mean, one of the things in the student focus group was, you know, stu, we asked students to think back when they were younger and they said they loved the iPad. I mean, we know from the curriculum standpoint, there are more app-centric experiences for kids where, you know, that better facilitates through an iPad. Same thing with a picture, same thing with the draw screen. And so it is certainly, from what we understand and know and what kids and teachers are using, iPad is a great tool at our primary elementary. But as you pointed it out, what, what came up in our focus group is students identifying that typing or that keyboarding component to papers and projects and things like that coming forward. So certainly what we shared with you tonight was a third, fourth, fifth grade perspective. But looking at primary, I, I would think, you know, right now, we have second graders using Chromebooks and, and because we, we've run out of iPads.
Right, so we're K1 iPads and then two through five.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So they do have screens, so, okay.
But we certainly could do iPads at, at the primary level kindergarten, first grade. And I think that probably would be a direction we would, we would look into more deeply with our teachers.
Okay, so we have second through fifth right now in Chrome and then sixth to eighth, or no, did sixth get new or seventh and eighth get new?
Sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sixth, seventh.
It was two orders, so seven and eight was what we originally ordered. And then additional funding became available, so we ordered sixth grade. So sixth, seventh, eighth grade have the brand new iPads.
Okay.
Nine through 12 have the fifth or sixth gen. K1 have minis, I'm sorry, K has minis. One has the full-size iPads that are fifth or sixth gen. And two through five have the Chromebooks. Took everything apart to get it out and it adds a suit. So that's our current reality.
Right. And I do, I mean, I see the need of multiple devices. I, I mean, I think especially in today's world of Zoom and technology and trying to read something while you're on a meeting and that kind of thing, you know, hopefully this isn't going to be our new reality and we'll go back to normal at some point. So I think just trying to be aware of that, of what that looks like. Is it still a multi-device type situation in, in regular times? Is that what we think or not necessarily as much?
I, I, you know, I think we all dream of regular times, but I think we're going back to a new normal. You know, one of the things that we, prior to, prior to COVID, we, as a district, we always prided ourselves in what's the tool that best matches the learning outcome or experience for kids. That's why we've had, that's why we have Chromebooks and we had carts, or Chromebooks and iPads and where we've had students with iPads, we've had Chromebook carts and vice versa. At the elementaries, we would have carts of each so that there was a diversity of tools. And so we, we do have a student, you know, population that has had experiences working with both, both technologies. Same thing with our staff. And so one of the things moving forward is the equipment that we have, it does have a shelf life. I mean, we, we, the iPad mini, seven or eight years, the things that we're buying now, we're going to continue to use as a district until they, until they go end of life. And I think one of the things that we've always committed to is continuing to evaluate that student experience and continuing to evaluate the tools that teachers need in order to deliver that curriculum content. So we're going to continue to do that, we're going to continue to try to be as responsive as we can, you know, to staff and students, but also look for ways that we can be more standardized in the, in the equipment and in the devices that we have for students moving forward. If there's anything you'd want to add to that.
Okay, and then with talk of the HP desktop, and you said you see a spot, a role for that? I guess, what would you see, I mean, in the dream world? What, what role would you see that the HP desktop has, you know, moving forward?
Officers.
Okay.
Comes to mind right away. Right now, all, all but two buildings have HP desktops in their classrooms and that's connected to all of our AV infrastructure. So if it's a smart board, it's connected, just like this scenario here is, there's an HP desktop here.
Marcus, can you, can you go more over the microphone?
I can, sorry.
Thank you.
Better? Yep, sorry.
More for the people not here.
Absolutely. And I'm wearing my mask, I'm sorry. So the question was, what role does HP desktops have? And I see it in, in office spaces and what I was, what I mentioned earlier was that the HP desktops are all connected to our classroom AV equipment, whether it's, you know, a smart board or an Epson short throw. So there is a need, but we've leased our desktops in the past and right now, we've, we've paid that lease and, you know, that's an area we have to look at upgrading again because, again, we're either on Windows 7 or Windows 10, they're, they're four to five years old and it's, we try to stick to a four or five-year replacement plan, but, you know, interesting, unique timing with, where our replacement plan falls and our budget situation and our current realities with distance learning. So we, we try to stay flexible. But I definitely think there's a need and it, there's a, be a good fit for them. But where is, to be determined. I could identify some areas where I think this absolutely they need to be, but I think it's based on further conversations, too. Moving forward, I, I don't know if, if there's a will or a demand or a need to have two or three devices for every staff member. Again, it's, it's hard to find a device that does everything and meets everybody's needs on the first, you know, go, go around, but it's what we try to do. But it's, it'll be all part of this discussion is what, what does that replacement plan look like moving forward? Something that we didn't mention yet, I, I believe we mentioned maybe in the August 3rd meeting is, you know, our short throw projectors, our smart boards, those, those are aging devices as well. And we, we have replaced them as they go out or their parts aren't available anymore because of the model number, we replace it with new. But it's something that, it goes back into that infrastructure that I, I definitely want to take a look at as well and just say, you know, is a smart board the way to go? Is an Epson short throw or a Brightlink, it's, you know, and smart notebook for software versus other software tools out there? So a lot of moving parts, but go back to your original question, I do think desktops have a place and I, we can identify a few right now. But moving forward, I would like to have that conversation on, if, if they're a fit in the classroom. But, um, moving forward, I would like to have that conversation on, if, if they're a fit in the classroom.
Um, and then my last question, and Julia may be putting you on the spot over here, just might need you. Just as far as the funding piece and looking at that preliminary information. I can't remember this from referendum stuff, but comparison, the capital project levy as comparative to an operating levy. The impact to the homeowner? This, I don't, I don't know why, I was kind of like, this seems like a higher impact per household, you know what I'm saying? Is there, is there a difference there? I can't remember.
There is.
Okay.
I haven't done the research into that yet to see what that impact would be versus a tech levy versus an operating. But we will certainly, that's on our agenda to do that and.
Because I just, yeah, depending on where it goes or whatever, I think maybe looking at options on that, even just the impact to the taxpayer, depending on what type of funding source would be helpful, too, I think.
One takes into consideration market value and one's on adjusted net tax capacity.
That's the difference. I knew it was on something else because I was like, ooh, this amount, it just seems a little different than, so.
And we'll do some research for that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it for me. Jonathan or Michael, do you have any questions?
Just very quickly, I would assume, um, seeing the commonality of the requests from students and teachers for a MacBook Air, that would answer the concern of teachers to be able to preview what their students are seeing and doing. Is that correct? I know that we've talked multiple devices as well, but.
Yes, that's, that is correct. I mean, there, you have teachers and students using, utilizing the same devices. It is a much more streamlined experience.
Jonathan?
I just have one. Refresh my memory back when we looked at these in August. And we laid out the, kind of the estimates on the cost for the different plans and you added two of those back in here. That, that total number was an, a one-time acquisition cost? That's not an annual, depending on how it's, how it's structured, that's a one-time acquisition cost, correct?
Correct.
So you want to talk a little bit, Marcus, as far as you referenced it before in the answer about a replacement plan? The capital projects levy is typically 10 years. So we would anticipate at least two, if not three, replacement plans. Sorry, Chair Schimmick. So, so we would anticipate, you know, over the course of a successful 10-year technology levy or commitment would have multiple, um, refresh cycles for this equipment. So yes, that would be the one-time cost, but that cost typically, like we've done previous contracts for technology, has either been leased to purchase over four years or five years, you know, with the terms of that type of agreement. Can you talk a little bit about the replacement plan, usually the cycle we are attempting to hit?
Yeah, it's, um. We're trying to hit a four to five year replacement cycle. That's not always the case and, and that's obvious if we have iPad minis that are seven years old. But it's, uh, we also like to get a return on our investment. If we, we see a device that still works and meets the needs and, and can provide a service and, and be a valuable tool, then we do it. And to be honest, people, they get used to their stuff and they get territorial, don't want to give it up as well. I mean, that's, that's human nature. We all do it. It's like, I like this device. Don't take it away, please. So it's, uh, but we, we try to stay true to that, that four or five year cycle. Again, there are some exceptions. We also look at, um, the, the capabilities of the device to upgrade to the latest and greatest OS as well. And if, you know, if like, for instance, the iPads start falling two or three iOS versions behind, then they, they don't get all the feature sets that are available with the latest and greatest updates, so that's another sign. So it's not, we're not always locked into a four or five year. I mean, that's just our, that's our guiding principle. It's our getting, you know, it's one of our benchmarks, but it also depends on the device and what it can and can't do anymore as well, so. Yes, Mary?
Actually, I would like to ask a couple of questions first, Mary.
Well, I'm sorry.
I, I guess I want some, I guess my comment is, uh, when we go move forward on this, if we move forward, obviously there's, you've asked what preferences are, so there's the nice to have and there's what we can get by with or a little better than get by with. I mean, technology has become pretty obvious that we need it and it's, you know, overwhelming how much we need it actually in this last nine months. So I guess I'm just kind of wondering, I mean, if somebody asked me what I prefer, I'm going to, top of the line, right? Why wouldn't I? So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about that question as to how we move forward. And the other part is, I just want to understand a little bit maybe to what Jonathan was saying. Those options you gave are just for the devices, so that doesn't include any staffing? I mean, it's great to have good devices, but if we can't have the staffing that can help us use them, that's an issue. So, um, not sure where next steps are, except to find out that kind of information, um, to get those dollars. The impact of what kind of a, of a ask we have from the community. I mean, what, the numbers that are here are, are kind of high. But yet we don't want to go halfway and end up back where we are now. So, I mean, I get that. There's a balance. So I, I guess, I don't really have a question as much as I have comments, just to say what I have. Mary, did you have a question?
Well, first of all, I, I'm sorry that I got on late again. Things went a little longer than I anticipated, but I had a couple of general questions that I'm sure have already been answered and then some that I don't think have based upon what I jumped in on. The first thing is, is just to clarify that regardless of when the levy goes through at this point, the earliest we can get it then is January 2022? The money, I'm just trying to put that into perspective also.
No, that's not correct. I'm going to have, we'll have Julie come up and, and talk about what that timing looks like pending a successful levy.
Just, did somebody already ask that question? Am I asking you to repeat it?
No, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
So, um, no matter what happens between now, anytime that you have a vote between now and no, but next November, that would go into effect the following school year. And then anything after next November would be again the following school year after that. So anything between now and.
Well, she is 2022 is right then for next year.
Yeah, so January 2022 is when we would start to actually receive the money because we start being taxed, January.
You would start being taxed in January, but the district doesn't recognize or receive that money till May and it doesn't get recognized until the following school year. Any money that's in our current, so any money for next year that we receive, for instance, and taxing is part of our 21, 22 budget. So anything that happens between now and next November is in our 22, 23 budget.
Okay.
So after July, so July.
Just simplify this for me, I apologize, because there were kind of, you know, between the tax year and then the academic year when we realized the money. If we were to do a levy in May, let's say, it would actually hit the homeowners in January of 2022? And then we would start to realize that money in the 2022, 23 school year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then I, I had a couple of questions for, um, the whole, um, process of determining where the, you know, the, the longevity, uh, the, um, lifecycle management plan, et cetera. You know, from, obviously the, the students haven't had a chance to touch a, a Surface Pro or anything like that. So the, the survey there would be a little off, but really the common denominator is they want to be able to store locally on their device and they want to have a keyboard, is what I'm gathering from the surveys of both the staff and the students. And then I would think that what we would want to do is look at a configuration that would last longer. And one of the issues you have with going, with, with giving the students anything but an actual Microsoft laptop is you're going to be limited on the cost of the memory, which is really one of the, you know, other than they, them dropping it or something like that, is one of the primary determinants of, of longevity of a device. So for instance, if somebody got a desktop or a laptop right now that has 16 gig instead of eight gig for memory, it's much more likely, even though it may act slower, it's much more likely to survive longer. And that's, you know, in, in, and we've talked about this back in July where you go with these smaller pads and the average configuration is eight gigs of memory. So you run into roadblocks on, on the next major, not the next couple of iOS upgrades or something like that, but a year and a half out, all of a sudden, a lot of your apps won't even load at the same time that you need to load, particularly from an internet. And so, you know, when I look, the keyboard, um, requirement and local storage, I add in the memory and that kind of does limit our options here, which, what we're going to cost out as far as if we don't want to continually to pay a replacement fee for these devices and, or we want them to truly last four years and not be crawling to the finish line in four years with some of our students and then be stuck with this massive, you know, redistribution of devices. And I'm not sure if you have an opinion on that, but that's kind of the way I see things.
So you're asking for an opinion?
Well, I mean, that's the way I look at it. If we're trying to maximize the price, maximize usability and give students the technology and teachers the technology, whether they work remotely or in the classroom.
So that's.
I mean, I've seen, two things, the common denominator is the keyboard and local storage. And the next thing is, is if we're looking at having something that's not going to live to the finish line when the lease is up, that one of the variables that we have is to be able to increase the memory capacity on these devices. Now, I'm not sure how you guys have interpreted this, but that's kind of why I'm seeing it. I'm asking for your opinion. Is that, is that, am I seeing this correctly?
No, I agree with, with a lot what you said. I, those are all factors that we need to consider as we, we, you know, determine our next steps. And I, I agree, um, a local hard drive or solid state drive came up a lot, keyboards came up a lot. And then you, you got to start looking at current, current demand on the device and the memory storage that it has and, and factor in the growth. So to your point, Mary, so that when we get to the end of the lease, it's not something where it becomes a doorstop. So I agree.
And our, our leases up when?
For which?
For which devices?
For the iPads. The HP lease that we have on the iPads, I think we voted on that in 2017?
I don't have it in front of me.
Can't remember.
Uh, we don't have that in front of us. We do have several different components for leases, so we can get that information for you and follow up with you, Mary. As well as the other board members as well.
Well, my concern with that is the difference between when we need to re-sign the lease. So maybe if we can get a technology levy passed, when we're going to get the money in? And how are we going to live through the ideal situation that covers our needs? And, you know, I don't know what the gap is there and what the risk level of that gap is.
Historically, it, just speaking, um, just again, I'd have to confirm this. Historically, our lease, our lease terms have been approximately four years. That, that has been historically how we've done a lease. And once we complete the lease, we purchase the equipment and that becomes the district's equipment. And as, you know, you, you probably heard part of this when you came in, the iPad minis that we've just replaced with the corona virus relief fund, those were devices, our devices that were seven years old. So we are getting an effective, or I guess a longer term than just the four years. We're getting multiple years beyond that. But again, when you get to a device that you cannot update the iOS, so you're two or three updates behind, it does limit the functionality of the device. And so I would say that would be exactly what we would want to avoid is getting to a place where our devices are no longer relevant or helpful tools in the hands of students or teachers. And so, you know, as we, I mean, that's the, I get, that's the planning that we have to do. That's the planning we continue to do when it comes to devices. The planning that we have done as a district has been around a replacement plan where we target four to five years around the technology that we have for staff so that they can do their jobs as well as for, for students. What has accelerated the demands on the district is going from an A12 one-to-one to, to really a K12, an E12 one-to-one as a result of the coronavirus and distance learning. And so that has, number one, taxed the equipment that we've had, but also we've had to use equipment longer and with more students than what we've originally intended. And so, yeah, all of that, we, I, you know, I think we, we can agree on all of those components. But moving forward, those are the plans we're going to continue to do as the board continues to deliberate, you know, a, a capital projects levy moving forward. You know, the new iPads that we have in place for our sixth, seventh, eighth graders, they're part, they're now in our circulation. We'll cycle out those iPad minis and, and that will be things that we continue to track for that student experience. And those were purchased, those were not leased, the recent ones.
I did see that on there and I think we had to because of the CRF conditions, but, um, so, you know, and I agree with everything you said, but I want to go back to lease comment about staffing, too, because as those, as those devices age, it takes more effort from the staff to keep them up, to keep them updated, to handle issues with them, stuff like that. So we're always better off being on a standard lifecycle, even if we can cycle some of the older equipment out into replacement, temporary replacements, uh, while certain things are being fixed or whatever. So I, I agree with that. It, did the CRF funds actually help with the issue of when the lease is going to be renewed and potentially when we can get funds in from a tech levy? Because that was kind of, if, if the lease is up, let's say this coming summer and we've got to re-sign it, are we entering any into any type of financial jeopardy area because?
No, we're not.
We're not going to. Okay.
The CRF funds have nothing to do with our current lease agreements with equipment. So the CRF funds.
I, I understand that, Jeff. But what, what I'm, I'm sorry, you don't mean to interrupt because I can't see you.
It's okay, okay, that's all right.
No, my question was, is when we re-sign the lease, then we need to fork out some money.
Correct.
Right? And so when we do that, and I'm happy we purchased some, so I understand that maybe we have a little bit of leeway in how much we're leasing or something like that. That's all, that's the only reason why I threw that in there. I'm just wondering if we, let's say the leases do, um, or something similar to that and we need to fork out a whole bunch of money for that. And let's say we are successful, get a tech levy passed, I hope. Are we okay with the financial gap, uh, of when we would get the money in versus when we have to pay the money? So that we have to pay and then we don't get it for a while. Does that, is that a financial issue that we need to discuss or is that even a concern?
That would be some, you know, I think that's to your earlier question. We would, we could certainly come back to, to another, to the next board meeting or send a follow-up as to when our leases are up for the equipment and the age of the equipment. No matter what, I mean, as, as a board, as you continue to have deliberations about a tech levy and the future of that moving forward, we still have to have a plan around either, you know, right now the leases we have are typically, as I mentioned, four years and then we would purchase them. It doesn't automatically trick, if we don't have a funding source or dedicated funding source and we haven't come to the board seeking a dish approval to use either general fund dollars or fund balance to purchase devices, we don't go off and sign new agreements and new leases. We ju, we just, we stop doing that. We start, you know, we work within the means that we have and within the budget that we have. And so I, I think to some of your specifics, we would have to come back and, you know, we could certainly share that in greater detail.
Okay. And my final just comment is, is as we make these decisions, I would focus on what the core requirements are in the equipment, not necessarily the operating system and what's going to be easiest to deploy and the longevity of that deployment on, on, and the ease to maintain them on the staff rather than, and then go back and say, okay, it's going to be HP or Apple. them on the staff rather than, and then go back and say, okay, it's gonna be HP or Apple or maybe even Dell. I mean, who knows, right? Go back and, and make those requirements of what we absolutely have to have for the students and for the staff first before we make the rest of the decision.
Thank you. Yes, good point.
Enrique, did you have anything to ask or add?
Actually, I think Mary's final point kind of fits on one topic that I wanted to bring up, which is making sure that whatever devices we look at, whichever path and plan we look at going forward, that we circle back and look at what exactly is it we're trying to accomplish in terms of educating our learners, making sure that our staff have the devices they need to do the work to be able to reach our students and that our students are able to do the work that we're asking, requiring of them. And that the devices, along with the software and whatever different applications and learning management system, that they are very cohesive and work really well together. Because there's nothing worse than having a powerful, top-of-the-line device that really doesn't meet the need for what the software is capable of doing or that's not compatible with the software packages. So there's the two-part evaluation that needs to take place.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay. I guess what I'm hearing, you're looking for next steps. And what I'm hearing generally from the board is that you've gone out and found out what, what, what works for the different levels. And right now, I think our questions have to do with timing. And timing in, in a couple of ways. One is in to when we can go out for a levy, when we would get the money, and then also, obviously, I don't want to say what our needs are because we already have those needs, but how long we can go out before, how long we can continue before we have to go out for that levy. So, and then what that cost is, what the best way is to go out to, what the impact is to our taxpayers. It is a sensitive time, even though we need the technology, it's kind of a scary balance. So I believe that that's the kind of information that we need now. If other board members have anything else to add or disagree, please speak up.
Is there a timeframe that you'd like us to come back to the board again? I know in August you had said, fall, please keep the, this topic at the center of our conversations. Is that something you'd like us to work with Dr. Stallow?
I think, I think, you know, without taxing you too much with all the other things going on COVID-related, that the sooner you can come back to the board, the better, at least then we can make a decision. Easier to have the information now and then delay it than to say, oh, why didn't we do this before?
Sure.
As, that makes sense for everyone?
Yeah, I, I guess I just, so as far as financial impact, just kind of looking out what a levy would do, you know, depending on if there'd be relief to operating dollars and that kind of thing, I guess I'd like to see what those impacts are and the timing, you know?
Right.
I don't know if that's more like spreadsheet-ish, but you know what I mean? Like, like really see specifically how the dollars can change depending on what those, what those numbers are. So.
I have a question on that timing.
Sure.
On the, what Stacy just said, when you go out and do the, the dollar breakdown, are you gonna do it according to the same tiers or are we going to do it according to the three groupings that were presented? The, you know, the equipment for staff and students only, the overall technology needs of the district, including smart boards, all that kind of stuff, are, you know, the, the three pricing tiers there and then seeing that net tax impact, is that possible?
I'm not exactly sure. I'm getting a little bit of some confused looks, so I'm not sure what you're, what you're actually asking, Mary.
Well, there was three areas of focus for, for the potential technology levy in the presentation. There was one student and staff devices, two instructional software and network infrastructure, and three additional technology staffing. Obviously, there's gonna be different prices and different costs for, for all of these. Some of these you may not be able to decouple, which I get. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can look at three tiers of what it's going to end up with as a tax impact, so we have something to chew on and, and know what, where the pain points are and know how to ask it from the community.
And have options with very, different variables. Jeff is gonna respond.
So if I may, all of this, you know, these are, you know, three distinct areas. We are able to track our instructional software and networks, software for annual costs. You know, same thing with staffing, the, the student-staff devices, you know, narrowing down those options will give us an amount, you know, again, that annual amount that we can factor in over the course of a, of a tech levy. And, and we could take a look at our current tech staffing and we can also evaluate perhaps maybe what other districts are doing relative to tech support. We would have to spend a little time there. So we could look at these three different areas with the idea of saying, this is what this option would cost, these are our costs here. You know, you already, in this presentation, you see what our current staffing costs are. And so, you know, it's relative to, you know, you kind of put those together and you can determine, we should be in that three and a half to four million, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but projected, you're, you're looking at basically here, depending on the student-staff device, and rounding out, you're looking at about a three and a half million dollar tech levy annually, projected. And Julie is, is mentioning and whispering from the back, at least. And so we would need to, again, fine tune this a bit, dig into this a bit more as far as the, again, that option does drive this number a bit, as well as if, you know, as from, from additional tech staffing too, that does drive this a bit as well.
Jonathan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, did you have something to add?
I, I was just gonna say, I think, I, I think you're headed in the right direction. What, what, what we need to be able to see, the options that you laid out with different devices are a lump sum for acquisition, that doesn't translate to what's an annual, you know, what's the annual cost of, of owning those things through a lease and adding that in with the operational cost of your staffing and your budgeting. I think keep, just keep truckin'. And, you know, we're, in a perfect world, an ideal world, Julie said three and a half maybe isn't enough. I don't, you know, whatever amount we determine that we have, it is going to pay for devices and it's also going to take a weight off of the other, off of the general fund, because it's gonna provide a funding source for something else. But those details, I think, will continue to flesh out. But that's, I think, that's where I would like to see the, the rest, the work go.
And, and I think, you know, we've talked about a couple of very different things this evening, but it all comes together. We've talked a little bit about the revised budget and our needs going forward as we look at declining enrollment, as we look at increased expenditures, as we look at not knowing exactly what's gonna happen, if anything, with additional coronavirus relief funds or what's gonna happen for years to come on money that we can count on, additional revenue from the state. So we've got a big piece to continue to flush out in terms of what's next year and the next couple of years look like with that. The technology levy then becomes a really important strategy and tactic that we can use to say, okay, that's a huge need. And, and thank you to, to Marcus and Jeff and Chris Lynn and team who have done a whole lot more research on this. But the tech levy becomes an opportunity for us to have a sustainable mechanism and funding mechanism for all three of those areas. We all of a sudden have a whole lot more devices than we have, which means a whole lot more support that's needed in that. So, so I mean, that becomes, that becomes a, all of these are gonna be vital. But I think these two things really have to work together in terms of saying, okay, what are we solving for exactly? What, what are, what are we solving for? What do we need as we look at the next couple of years? As the, we come forward and the board helps with parameters around enrollment assumptions, assumptions about what we're gonna get from the state, some of those kinds of things so that we get a picture of what the next couple of years budget looks like and how this is a strategy to assist us with that as we look at other bu, budget adjustments that we're gonna need to make over the next couple of years. But I think it's all kind of part of that same puzzle.
You're right. Yep. Okay. Clear as can be.
Thank, you have given us good direction and, and we'll work to, to do more research and, and we'll come back to the board again soon.
Thank you. Thank you for your work already.
Thank you.
Okay, Ready to Learn Plan, Dr. Stallow.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I don't have a, a lot to update you on. I think you're all well-versed on where we are. Obviously, as you know, we're in this bit of a transition right now, today and tomorrow. We're planning days for our elementary folks, our secondary teams are in distance learning right now. By November 30th, all E-12 programs will be in distance learning. As you recall, we had to put a pause on our early learning programs, so they are going to be distance learning on November 30th. Our hope is, because we really had to make that decision based on staff being quarantined, so our hope is by December 7th, to be able to bring those early learning programs back to the in-person models that they had. On November 30th, beginning November 30th, we'll also have some other groups of some students in session as the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan calls out. As you know, we continue to be required to provide Tier One childcare. We also are providing fee-based childcare to help our families during this trying time. Students who are receiving special ed services in our center-based programs will be transitioning back on November 30th, again, after some time for planning and transition for staff. Our Bridges students will be a reduced time in person for both students and staff, but they will be still having some in-person learning during the pause that we're all currently in. And then we also will have, especially at the secondary, some of our English learning students, as well as some students who need additional academic support. So I just wanted to remind the board that even while we're in distance learning, we still are encouraged by the Minnesota Department of Education to continue to provide services as we're able, so we are still doing that at this point. You know, we get a lot of questions, and I'm sure you have them too, about, well, what's the transition plan back? And many of the conversations that superintendent colleagues have and as we talk to the Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education, regional support teams, you know, we all have that question of what are, what's the threshold? And we don't have a specific data point or target that we've been given at this point. I think guidance will continue to come our way. So it's a really hard question to answer, so I usually don't answer it right now. Here's what I'll say. It's really important that we have some local data. So I'm going to make a request that our parents continue to call the school and let us know when your children have positive cases. We will continue to track that even while kids are in distance learning, because one of the things that we want, if you remember that scalpel approach that we've heard about, one of the things we want is to be able to use school data. Our county data could still be really high, our zip code data could still be high, but if our school data is lower, then we can start transitioning. And, and I don't think it would be all at once. I think we do some transition slowly, monitor data, case data, see how things go, and then start transitioning more. So just, just want to remind families that it's really important that they continue to let us know when there's positive cases with their students so that we can continue to track that and have some local data. So I know I wasn't really asked a question, nor did I really answer a question, but what I do want to say is, you know, this isn't what any of us want. We want our kids in school and parents want the kids in school and teachers want the kids in school and kids want to be in school. And we'll, we'll do everything we can as soon as we can in a safe way, get our, get our kids back. So I guess just in closing, the other thing that I want to do is, as we are on, in this week of Thanksgiving, is just to, again, to thank our, our staff, our students, our families, our administrators for their amazing and difficult work during these really impossible times. Again, this isn't what we want in navigating a, a public health crisis and trying to make the best decisions possible for educational purposes are often in conflict with one another. And that's what we've been living for sure. But I'm grateful to the support and want families to continue to work closely with principals and teachers to make sure that we have amazing experiences for our students. Thank you.
Hey, move on then to the board governance policies. I asked to have policy 203 brought back forward or brought up again. It, it's not up for review, it doesn't need to be changed or voted or go through the whole process, but through the course of the way we're doing our meetings now, I'm specifically looking at policy 203, section six, how we conduct meetings, and under 6.13, open forum. The last couple of meetings, we've been deviating from our policy of how we read or how people are able to express themselves from the community. So basically, we've, I've read letters on topics that have been on our agenda, that's not what our policy says. And I just want the board to be aware that that's what's been happening and if we want to continue to, to allow that. My personal feeling is that we don't allow the public to come into our meeting, so the very least we can do is read their comments at a meeting. And I checked with MSBA on this and because of the executive order, there's no reason that we need to change the policy at this time. It's based on the executive order, so the policy would stay the same. It does not need to have any revisions or anything like that. But I wanted to make sure the board is okay with that because that is a deviation, that's happened twice already. And I expect it's not gonna, the situation won't change real soon. So if everyone's okay with that, just wanted to bring it forward.
Yeah, I think as long as we're in this, if they can't come in, it makes sense to read.
Okay. Any other comments on it?
Anybody dissent? Anybody dissent? Disagree?
Everyone okay? All right. Great, thanks. Then we have no first readings of policy, second reading is policy 521, student disability non-discrimination, section 504. I'm not sure who's presenting that. Jeff? And this policy would come for approval in December, I believe.
Yes, this is, this policy has come before, yes, you've had a couple of looks at, at this, just as a quick recap, this was drafted by our, our district's legal counsel. I think, I, I know it's, you've had a couple of conversations on this. I've not heard any, any additional revisions or questions as a result of this policy and so stands before you as is.
Okay, as I said, this will come to the December meeting for approval. Does anyone have any questions or comments to make? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Moving on to superintendent relations, anything to add, Terry?
No, I continue to welcome and enjoy one-on-one meetings that folks have. Unfortunately, I know many of you have been scheduling those and we've had opportunities to spend some time in buildings and that might look a little different right now, but please continue to schedule those and we'll get back into buildings and, and see kids soon, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no informational items, however, I do have one note from a community member for the public forum. This is from Tanya Sharper, Credit River, parent, educator and community member. "Good evening, Dr. Stallow and members, members of the board. I want to take a moment to thank you for the work you are doing to ensure the safety of our students and staff. I know the decisions you are making are not always popular. You are following state and county guidelines and using our local, county and state data to make those decisions. The decision to go to distance learning is for the safety of all of us. These are difficult times. Thank you for continuing to use a data-driven approach to decision-making. We as a community know that we need, we know what we need to do to get our kids back in school. It is up to us to do the hard work to get them there. Thank you for all you're doing. You are appreciated." And that was the only one that was submitted. At this time, I will adjourn the study session and call, to go into closed session.